Chair, if you want to lead us in the pledge, we got five thirty. Thanks.
Mark Serbrook.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Rosie.
President.
Roger Mayhew.
Yep.
Jenny David.
Here.
Any additions or corrections? We got a pretty lengthy agenda, guys, so I'm gonna try really hard to keep us on track.
Yeah.
Just moving along. Any additions or corrections?
No. Good.
Commissioner, will see anything?
No.
Public comment? Any public comment and agenda items only? Any public comment on the phone? Appointments. Mr. Bowers, come on up. Emergency manager coordinator, you have twenty twenty-four hazardous material emergency preparedness planning program grant agreement and county building emergency action plan.
Yes, so the hazardous materials emergency preparedness grant is a renewal. We do it every year. It's fifteen hundred dollars. I just learned a few more things about it on our contribution in kind. And I expect it to actually come back at about four thousand dollars this year from the grant. Because we have the two fifty for the online program that we use to manage the three oh two sites. And we also had somebody who did a lot of management activities in there that I will be turning into voice in at your next meeting to be paid. So I just need to sign on the fourteenth so I can have it to Lansing that closes business on the fifteenth and we'll be all good to go. As far as the county emergency action plan, so Danielle, Tim and I got together over the last month. And we hammered out the final stuff on that. We already had an emergency operations plan for the buildings that had already been done in twenty-two. Mary, his secretary at the time, had done a lot of the work on there. I want to make sure you guys know that she gets a lot of the credit for for the getting it in on paper. I fed her the information and she put it together for us, did a great job. So we're actually finalizing that and based off of that and some of the stuff that they had done in Roscommon County. In the court buildings, we had gotten together and we actually created a brand new emergency action guidelines for all of the county employees. So they understand what their role is in all of this. And that was a step that was definitely missing until Danielle provided all to our attention. In the meantime, I have also been renewing the countywide emergency operations plan. It has a few finishing touches left to do. I plan to have that there for you guys for next week also. You should have some time with it to be able to look it over before you ratify that or. And coming from an email last week from the community citizens coalition. So we do apply for that grant every year. Two years ago, we got that five thousand dollar grant. Last year, we were denied the five thousand dollar grant. I am planning on applying for it to strengthen our volunteer forces and commitments. Something Pete Paxton will be working directly with me on. So we will be moving forward with that in September and October.
Questions for Mike? Commissioners? Pat, did you have something?
No. Well, I understand what you're doing. Good.
Commissioner, will see.
No, thanks, Mark.
Do we have to do anything with this, the emergency action plan?
Uh.
You're gonna have.
Sign it, accept it, you know. It's not ratified and adopted. Adopted, thank you, sir. Yes, adopted. There will be three separate adoptions in the process and they all three have adoption pages on them.
Tim, do you have anything to add to this?
Yeah, we don't have those documents right now, correct? I don't remember. Did we put them on? It's been so long. I don't think they are.
I don't know if you put them on the. Or in their.
My name's Sam.
Okay, so I'll make sure that you guys get those. I'll make sure that happens tomorrow that those final copies are with Tim. I thought that that had happened. I apologize.
I got one more comment.
Go ahead.
I do want to say, though, when this was brought up to us a while back, I really appreciate Mike realizing the importance to finish this. Because I had great concern as why it wasn't completely finished. But we're getting there now, but I want to thank Danielle. Danielle's been.
Absolutely. Danielle was Danielle was really key over the last month of saying, hey, guys, you know, we've really got to drill down to get this done. She was really key and it was good to work with her.
Good.
We also got directional placards up for emergencies and stuff up on the second floor that had never existed that we realized needed to be placed up there for people to be able to either shelter in place or evacuate the building safely.
So what do you do with this action plan? Like, do you have to?
So I will.
Do you have to?
I, yeah, so this action plan will get turned into the state of Michigan once it's, once it's completed and everybody signed on. And during an emergency, that is the guidelines that we use in order to for our response. It'll go out to all the department heads. It'll go out to the EMS, the fire stations, the police, MSP. Everybody will get a copy of this is Ogumon County's plan if we are in the middle of a disaster. So they know what's taking place. Now, along with that, since you've asked the question, along with that, we have the local emergency planning committee that is connected to the hazardous materials grant. And those are the people that oversee all of the hazardous substances that reside here inside the county. And we also make plans for hazardous substances that travel through in and out of the county, either on rail or by by motor vehicle. And with that, we have the local planning team. And the local planning team is a wide variety group of public officials. And they take a look and they look at the emergency operations plan. But since we're going to have that completed, this local planning team, I want to get them started in on the hazard mitigation plan. Because our hazard mitigation plan has expired. And I've told you guys two or three times, the 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 stuff with getting that grant and my insecurity on you'd get your money back. So I've never actually spent any money on that grant. And I have done it before, so we're just gonna do it without the grants. And I will manage that process with the local planning team group. And then Tim and I are also working on putting a group together for the emergency operations center. If we do have to activate that emergency operations center, that we'll start meeting and doing trainings every quarter there instead of throwing that together at the last minute. So so we can start getting people within the county the education they need.
Once we get this emergency action plan all set, I'd like that posted on the county website as well.
It should be posted on the county website under emergency management, yes.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
You all have a great night. Be safe.
You too. Randy Booth, equalization director. I didn't see.
I'm in this afternoon and he has a conflict up in Mile, but this is a routine item that we deal with all three of these contracts. They directly relate to remonumentation. There are two surveyor services contracts and one county representative agreement that's part of this package that he's requesting your approval. These are required as part of the grant. So the county representative and the surveyor agreements are specifically cited in that statute. This is something that you've approved annually since I've been here. So this is just for the most recent round of remonumentation funds that are incorporated into the budget.
Questions? Commissioner, will see.
It sounds pretty standard stuff. There's nothing financially increases or anything. There's just.
They, yeah, the dollar amounts are based on the number of section corners that the surveyors will do. So dollar wise, you know, as far as say the hourly rate, not much fluctuation there. But I think there are a couple of extra corners. I might be mistaken, but Randy had that outlined in one of the agreements about how many there were.
Commissioner Scott.
I've done this quite a long, every, every year that I've been here and yes, we, it's a statute that we have it done. The state sends us money for it. You know, and then we use our local, we're using local surveyors. And then Lampoon's the county representative for it. I don't see any problem with this at all.
Commissioner Mayhew. That covers B. I'll be correct, Tim?
It does.
At MC fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget, circuit court central service expenditure request. Good evening.
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 You have the floor? Tim, you have the floor?
Well, this, in fact, the next series of groups you're going to hear from, we're invited here at your request as we went through the draft budget here to go. You'd ask for us to specifically visit with a few items in the case of the courts having to deal with shared services that we use with Roscommon County, both the districts and the courts have provided you with the line item breakdown of how that number has arrived at. And of course, then we'll talk to the probate court and sheriff and the building inspections department afterwards. But again, this was to help clarify what these expenses were for and then any questions you might have for the court.
Do you guys have anything to add before we ask questions?
I don't think so. No.
Questions? Commissioner Scott.
Well, I think, I think the biggest change happened when, when yourself and Judge Phoebe took over was that we used to have the chief judge here in our county and, and wasn't it?
No.
Noble, wasn't he the chief judge?
He was.
But he was based here. Budgets like that?
I don't think so. In district court?
Budget was always.
Yeah, it was always based out of Roscommon.
Oh.
I think since at least.
Hey, but I'll explain this.
Since I think, yeah, like the two thousand and three.
Oh, that'd be long before me, you know. Okay, well, maybe it's just the way it was explained or something. I thought that that's, I thought that was the the change. But I'm looking for yours right now.
Yeah. To me, the script that we have on here doesn't really, I see the fiscal year twenty. I wish I would have had a comparison, like it doesn't tell me a whole lot that I'm looking at.
Know what you're looking at.
I'm looking at what's on our iPad. Proposed fiscal year twenty-two budget, shared services, circuit court. Like what it was.
I think I have. There has been an increase in the request for central services for this year.
Oh. Thank you.
So, yeah, all we have is the twenty twenty-six budget shared service circuit court that's just got a few things listed there in the total.
What looks like?
One is used, the one is left.
Entire.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then on the right hand side, the twenty twenty-six changes were.
In red?
No, that's explaining what everything is.
Oh, okay.
And the twenty twenty-six changes, salary is going to be lower. Longevity will be lower. There's different things, but they're calendar year, not fiscal year. So trying to do this at this point is.
So it's an estimate at this point. Okay.
So that's tough to do.
Yeah. About, yeah.
Yours is on January one through December.
Correct.
So I, 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 there's been no increase from last year to this year?
No.
On your budget whatsoever?
Nope, not for the central service.
Overall, there are a couple, but not in central services.
What are the couple that are overall?
Interpreter.
Okay. Appellate fees.
Appellate fees.
And transcripts.
And that was based on court rule, statute changes that we had to deal with. That changed those fee structures. Proposed budget for twenty-six is on page six of the budget spreadsheets that you'll see in the actual.
I was looking at the sheet, those two gave us.
Proposed.
Last month, that's last, I.
On there, yeah, you've got a new one. I pants.
On the.
Not sure that this has been changed for the courts. It actually looks like we've budgeted less for the circuit court, but what we've done is moved out those bailiff and courtroom coordinator wages that we talked about a few months ago. They've gone to a different line now, so that's why you see the difference. But otherwise, yeah, most of these lines are unchanged.
Well, kind of same number, you know. Okay. And then, like you say, the interpreter services are included in central services.
No.
No.
That is one that's that was.
And we're moving it.
It's be.
Oh, it's moving out.
Move to two eighty-three. Because there's two different budgets over there as well other than this one. So that's being moved to the other one.
Okay.
Because we added an interpreter line here.
I see. Okay.
Shared court. The ones that say shared are typically ones that are shared with other courts.
The circuit court here and circuit court in Roscommon.
Okay.
Exactly.
What, what was their fund balance last year?
They're part of the general fund, so they don't have a separate fund balance.
So where do, what, where do I find that on our overall?
You open up the one that is the proposed twenty twenty-six budget, the general fund.
Yep.
Page six.
Yes.
In the middle, you see the circuit court, department two eighty-three. And they have that line item breakdown.
Well, here you have this fiscal twenty-five here and fiscal twenty-six.
What's highlighted in yellow there?
That's just so you can go to the central services line right away. You can see it and not have to hunt through the other numbers.
I only see one thing in yellow. It's the.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's the breakdown that they've shown here.
Which matches all the way across. Well, I'm glad you gave me the spreadsheet here. And Mark Del, what the explanations are. And thank you. Lot of stuff I didn't know. The judge is glad you came home.
Well, certainly.
What's, what's court administrator and Judge Travel? Is that mileage? Is that?
Yeah.
So you go between Roscommon and are you half and half? I'm sorry, I don't know.
Yeah, she does.
So we split you with Roscommon as well and you're the.
Court administrator.
Okay. I apologize.
So she took over for Terry Colini, who held a position for.
Oh, she retired last year, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Exactly.
And you're out of, it's working all fine.
Working out great.
Great. Great.
Was she?
That's why I asked him.
Yeah, she was.
She was split as well?
She was.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions with this, guys?
Hey, I really appreciate the.
What's HR? I probably should know. H R A. It was zero and that claims paid from twenty twenty to the end of year. Which H R A?
Entering.
All reimbursement account.
Okay. See.
Most time it doesn't happen.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you for coming.
No, I, do you have any questions, Commissioner?
I just want to thank you for me.
Mister, well, did you have any questions?
Appreciate you being here. Thanks for some information. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to look this over. Thanks, guys.
All right. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Hey, Lois. Okay. District court central service expenditure request. Get that one? Do you have anything similar to this?
No, I, I already provided a breakdown of everything that our shared budget consists of.
Okay.
Or C.
And this line, shared services, district court.
No, those are just, that's billings. That's not the.
Yeah, I know. I've got it all together.
District court. Yeah, well, the year change, you showed us, you showed us a column for twenty-five and twenty-six.
Yes.
Where, where a circuit didn't. That's why he was asking for a comparison.
Oh, I see.
Tim, we've asked you a few questions. Have you learned anything along the way? Can you add to this? We. No?
I don't remember the questions, so. The breakdowns, the request at eighty-five thousand twelve per county, you see the breakdown on its or C two on the iPad. District court central services where they've broken out similar to what we just saw with circuit court, what those costs attributed to. And then how they're split between the counties.
What page are you on? On the budget?
On the budget.
On the budget, page seven.
Yeah. Page seven, and it's all district court on that page. And again, I've highlighted that central services. Yeah, bench for you so you can see that.
So question.
Go ahead.
The increase that I see is office supplies equipment under three thousand dollars. What? You have a plan for something? Is something coming?
It's by, by three hundred dollars?
Oh, no, no, it's the line item says, hey, the, the title is office supplies slash equipment on under three thousand dollars.
Oh.
That's the largest increase.
Well, actually.
Only five hundred dollars.
The largest increase is healthcare. Yeah, healthcare is the main increase.
Oh, okay, well.
Healthcare and H S.
That is the biggest one, but I can understand what, what that is. I guess I don't under, I just, just ask.
Your question over five hundred dollars and.
I'm just asking.
Um, well, I have an invoice right now for three thousand files that I ordered between the two courts that increased and the invoice itself. Part of it is just increasing normal costs of expenses. And then we've been asked by you guys to do different things with office supplies and that's going to cost more money. So we're just trying.
Well, everything else is the same almost.
Yeah, we, I mean, our budget is pretty much besides the insurance, which no control over.
Yeah.
Is it pretty much the same exact budget.
And, and healthcare, I mean.
Yeah, the healthcare. Yeah.
We don't have much control.
No, the services was what? Explain that. I, that's the.
That's what you guys shared.
With Roscommon?
Yes.
So by looking at this, we pay. What are we paying? What does Roscommon pay?
Same.
Same thing. It's right there as well.
So I'm looking at.
You both pay the same.
Is this shared position still going well?
It's going wonderful.
So how much time do you spend here and how much time do you spend there?
Fifty percent.
It's half and half?
Weekends too.
That's right. That's right. Yeah. You could explain that in other meetings.
Questions for that's?
No, no, I just found everything.
Commissioner, will see anything?
No. Okay, we've had this information in for a while. I'm all good.
I'm glad you came.
Well, just wanted to make sure there wasn't anything, you hear the rumors and you're just questioning why. And so you just want to make sure you cover everything for you guys, so.
Because it's our job to look everything over and answer questions.
That's fine. No, that's what we're here for.
Yeah, thank you. Well, careful.
Probate court. Hi, guys.
Hi.
Evening, guys. We're here to answer any questions you have or any three different budgets. The childcare fund, probate budget, the front of the court budget. I know you had questions about fund balances and some other items. The what I'd like to point out, I guess, with the childcare fund budget, we've, we've had a good year as far as not having to spend a lot of money on institutional care and not a secure placement. So we've reduced that line at a hundred and some thousand dollars, which, again, that's not dollar for dollar because of reimbursement in that. But the county appropriation actually goes down eighty-seven thousand dollars. That's, we reduce next year. Plus, obviously, we'll be able to give some of this year's back. Although this morning I had to place a girl in an expensive place, but of course, two hundred and forty-eight dollars a day. So hopefully she not there very long. But anyway, so that budget that we requested actually went down significantly. Um, the.
I think that was, that was one of the questions we had because.
Basically, it's just, hey, we had a good year, so we didn't have to spend all that money on secured extension. So we're hoping next year is.
Projecting.
But like, like we'll discuss here in a minute, if we have unexpected, that's where that fund balance comes into play. But, but we're willing to talk about that too. And like I say, it's, it's, it's your money. It's just a matter of. It's got to be there.
Our money.
Your county's money. The, it's just got to be there in case we need it, in case I don't have a choice on paying some of these bills. But we're doing it pretty well as far as, as using community resources and quite frankly, some people we want to place, there's not opening. So that saves us actually money because we can't place them sometimes. But in any event, that, that county appropriation portion should be going down about eighty-seven thousand dollars. The probate court budget. I think we figured the county appropriation, we, oh, that's all county, but twelve thousand four hundred ninety-five savings from last year. And that's looks like most of this for the health insurance savings somehow. But the front of court budget is a slight increase of seventy-three hundred dollars and change. The front of the court budget has a fund balance we can talk about. Childcare fund has a fund balance we can talk about. Probate. For the general fund balance. So we're here to answer your questions.
Commissioner Scott.
One second. Get to that. Fund balance. You're kind of. Yeah.
As far as fund balance. Is that where you're headed with?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at here.
Childcare fund or?
Oh, well, in probate court. And the final numbers, I mean, they're recommending, we're recommending, recommending a little lesson in expenditures on what you requested. Are you going to be able to live within that?
Yeah, we're, I think our calculations here. Well, for.
I got it. Bottom, bottom line.
There's a pretty big difference.
See requested versus recommended.
What's happened there is two things in play. Again, you've got the bailiff issue again. So this is the general fund item. So those bailiff numbers have been moved to the security lines. But there are two that I've got highlighted in yellow. The first one is administrative wages. There's been a proposed increase here. That's something that we would need your approval on. And there's, I think, a little bit difference in the formula too. This is a position shared between the probate court and friend of the court. You know, it's Michael's position. I had prior years, it was a seventeen percent and was it eighty-three percent difference? And now it's, you proposed a twenty-five, seventy-five difference, which I have. Whatever. It's just a different formula. We try to make it work because friend of the court gets a higher reimbursement rate.
Yeah.
So we, we try to maximize that as much as possible. Obviously, it can't be a percent, but like, and like you said, Tim, the problem is counties our size usually have two different people doing the front of the court director and the probate court director. So we can't find another county to compare apples to apples with. So and basically their request is basically to try to bring all the court administrators to comparable wages. So that's why that number is, the rest is changed. And part of that with, with, with this position, part of it would come from two different budgets. The front of the court budget, which is seventy-five percent of the wage, which is reimbursed at sixty-six percent by the federal government. And then the probate court, which is not reimbursable, but that's twenty-five percent of the
Of the total cost.
The total request.
Yeah.
So the second line on here that's highlighted is the. The second line on here that's highlighted is the judge's wage, uh, at one eighty-seven forty-one. And refresh my memory, does the state reimburse that?
Yeah, hundred percent.
Hundred percent. And it's set by the title and it's the, the, it's whatever the. The state. Rate is, I think, if they get one percent, I, judge will get one percent, whatever it is. So I may get a letter every September saying what the wage is gonna be and, and it's hundred percent reimbursing. With benefits too, I think, right? Let me make sure that revenue line, any maintenance.
Are you gonna go anywhere further with that?
No, I think, I think, like you say, the bail and stuff like that, I think that was already subtracted. I think they already did that.
They, they, no.
I didn't subtract it from what I submitted.
Okay.
We weren't there yet, I don't think.
You, you requested less than the, than the expenditures left, you, but we cut it down to recommended even more, that's.
Well, and you, so the bailiff is a part of that, as Tim had said, and then you also have. Um, I think this morning you got the, the numbers for the defined benefit folks, which are, are in our line item, so he adjusted those. I just saw that this morning for the first time.
Oh.
So I, that makes sense to, that makes sense to me if we're cutting, you know, ten thousand dollars out of the, the defined benefit line item. In our budgets, then I haven't looked, I haven't looked at final numbers to, to verify that, but I'm assuming that he has good numbers for that actuarial and will. So there was a reduction there that.
So my question that you live within that, you can.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's where I'm, who's going.
As far as the administrative wages are concerned, I'm inclined to agree with the court on their recommendation too, so that would, uh. Change the formula and the pay rate, uh, in that position. That will get us closer to that requested number.
Well, because I, I see increases where we've increased on the recommended side. Uh, on, rather over, over the requested, but, uh, in some places and then the other way around.
And there has been a change in staffing, um. So, and that hasn't been put into this formula yet, so that could still be a fluid number, it's not changed by much.
So in your, in, in our request for the, for the permanent F O C permanent wages, is that what you're talking about?
Right.
In the two fifteen fund, there was that, that eleven thousand dollar difference there, I didn't have time to talk to you about this morning. Um, that I assumed was taken into consideration that we may have a new employee in a position, so we have a, we just a seven-year employee, actually a. Thirteen-year employee moved upstairs from, um, from F O C, moved to probate. Um, so if we bring, depending on what, who it is that decide, if it's somebody that we move in, we're not sure where that's gonna fall, so. Um, that number I was, was, is fluid until we figure out exactly how that's gonna be filled at this point.
Could be a new hire, could be somebody that transferred to the union, just depends on what happens. Cause right now, the, uh, we have an o- open. Unfilled position in front of the court when one of they, one of them moved up.
Uh huh.
And then one lady from our office went to work for the state for more money and worked from home, so can't blame her there.
Oh, yeah.
So. So that created a little bit of shifting, so hopefully I get to a point where I stop shifting.
Right, right. And of course, in, in that respect, it adds to the fun balance.
Right.
You know? And no longer takes long.
Well, yeah, yeah, it's, longer we're not paying wages.
Right.
More you're saving, obviously, so. Um, also, obviously, whether.
And this is in front of the court, this person.
The court. Yeah, that's where the opening is right now.
Right.
And we're kinda thinking, cause they have that ninety-day right to go back, so we're kinda.
Yeah.
I don't wanna say. No, I'm just dragging our feet, and I don't wanna fire somebody, I just, because the person wants her job back.
Right.
I'm, I'm not that kinda person, so like.
Right.
So we're kinda making sure she likes the position before we actively.
There's some real nice people upstairs, so.
Oh, okay.
A lot of experience you lost, that's too bad.
Yeah. In both offices.
Okay, well, great, this is, this explained a lot to me. Cause you are talking about three different courts and.
Three different courts, three different budgets, two of the most complicated budgets, we call their re- federal reimbursement regulations. Which who knows what's gonna happen to them in the next.
Right.
Few years and, and state of the world right now, but. Um, I don't have a problem talking about our fund balance, Chuck, if you want to, my understanding, you were thinking about possibly. I won't say capping it, but setting an amount, I don't have a problem with that, just what the understanding is, if I need more money, we gotta find it, but.
I think we were looking at that overall number and it looks fairly large.
Can I jump in?
Please.
Um, so twenty eighteen, I think, um, we ended up in a circumstance where we hit March. We started looking at all the kids that were in placement. We had to come to the, to the board and ask for a half a million dollars, right? Um, out of nowhere, we didn't have a fund balance, we weren't carrying fund balances at that time. So.
For my time.
Yeah. So when Tim came on board, we started talking a little bit about funding and how that would work. We had an issue with the state, um, where they had, there was an overpayment, so they shipped us back money, which was into the next fiscal year. By the time we got it. The decision was made to put that into the, to start growing that fund balance with that money. Since then, we've had two different audits that have kicked us back Title IV E money, we put that into the fund balance. The number that it is right now, which I, I think we started the fiscal year at four hundred and seventy-nine thousand and change.
Yeah.
Really, that number exists in the four hundred thousand dollar mark because we have come and asked for five hundred thousand dollars before. It, it, it's not specific, it doesn't have to be that number. As Judge said, you know, we're open to conversation to say. Let's carry a fund balance here in case we end up there, and that's how we've been able to cut a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars this year out of the budget, because. We looked at trends and said, okay, we've been, you know, really tentative to do it before, so that we don't. We have a fund balance that, you know, that immediately we use it.
Right.
You know, you want that there as a, as the, as a, a bit of a safety net for when we do have to put kids in, in long-term care.
And a safety net for, for the county as a whole.
Right, yeah.
Absolutely.
So.
Well, I, uh, our data goes only back to twenty twenty.
Right.
And I'm looking back at that, you had a fund balance of nine thousand, a hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Right.
So that doesn't even come close to.
Seventy-five hundred dollars a month for this young lady I just did this.
Right, right, so. Yeah, so you could, you could have her in there for, for thirty-three days.
Exactly, you know, we just got a bill for thirteen thousand for six weeks. You know.
Yeah.
Detention, detention.
I thought, yeah.
So, it's non-secured, reimbursable, secured is not, so that's, that's all, that's why it's so much more expensive, so.
Sure, sure. No, you, you.
Personally reimbursable, that's.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
How's it going across the road there?
It's going great, I think the, the. I think they've used it pretty much every day, but I, but I see vehicles there, it's court school. Um, this will ramp up now with this, with the school, they also have some other kinda sessions. Um. I'm trying to think of the name of that.
Does that help us not get to the point that you were at today?
She started there, she went from there, and she went to, um. Eagle Village Non-Secure, keeps running away, keeps. So I had to go to step up to secure, and so it started there, it didn't work with her, um, but.
But yes.
Yes, it's definitely.
I mean, that's why we see this, it's, it, with this fund balance that that is.
But that's, I think it's a combination of both that working and. Availability of spaces with, with these programs that we have to. Find something different or do something different and, and. But it's been getting better, so.
Where, where would you guys be comfortable as far as a fund balance? What number would you be comfortable seeing? I remember when you came to us with that five hundred thousand, I think that's right when I started.
I'm open, if, I mean, if you wanna set it at. Three fifty-four or something like that, and just like I say, you can take it down to. Two hundred if you want, just understanding that if nothing happens, I have to come here and I have to say you need to find two fifty or. That's, that's just the thing, and like I say, it's the county's money, it's kinda just in an emergency fund for this situation. And hopefully we never need it, and like I say, technically, we're given, I say given back, we're not using all of our appropriation from this year. Cause we had a good year, um, hopefully next year is very similar and, and.
The trend continued.
But, uh.
Do you share staff and stuff with Ross Common as well?
I'm sorry.
You guys do not, correct, okay.
No, we don't have anybody we share, we share between friend of the court and probate court, but not two different. Or colonies.
Tim, do you have any ideas, thoughts?
Yeah, it's a conversation, we kinda turn on its head here a little bit. We usually talk about fund balancing, what the cap is, but I think in this case, we're talking about what the minimum. Should be, uh, as opposed to a cap. And you keep mentioning that five hundred thousand number, and I get shivers every time you do, because I think it's a very real possibility on any given. Year that that could happen. And that's close to where we are, we're within, uh, what, twenty-one thousand dollars of that. Um, I, I wouldn't be uncomfortable if that was, we set our, our minimum. So we didn't fall below that, we would always then have that resource to turn to, should, uh, the worst happen. Um, you know, Judge had mentioned three hundred fifty thousand, okay, I'm, I'm a little nervous about that, but. Certainly, it's, I think, you know, realistic, uh, to say the least, so I. Or I need to give you the advice, I would say that's, let's set that five hundred thousand at the minimum, in any year where it goes over that. We can have a discussion about what we do about, you know, anything that's old.
I hope it never comes to that, obviously.
I would rather be in a position, having that, that comfort level, we operated here for a few years where we didn't have that. You know, anywhere really, uh, to work with. And so not only for, you know, the current board, but future boards to have that available, should it be needed. I think it's very worthwhile.
How about, Commissioner Wolf?
All right. Good conversation, I mean, you know, the fun balance, I like seeing positive high fun balances, it's good to see. Again, I hope we stay consistent and that'll stay that way, and I think, you know, each year we look at it, but I think for right now, we just. Keep it rolling with where it's at and we just monitor it.
Commissioner Scott.
Well, our proration for. This year is gonna go down anyway. Um. If, if the fund balance gets added to by the end of. The, the next projected year. Then we can, we can, uh, adjust our appropriation at that point for that sum and still retain that, that cushion. I, I agree with you, we don't wanna see a five hundred thousand dollar swing, but. You've had to do it in the past and. And I see some other swings here, you know, of, of a hundred and fifty, things like that between the years, you know. So, yeah, and. We're not stopping making kids.
We, we've always been tentative because we didn't have enough trend to look at to say.
Uh huh.
Okay, let's really look at taking the X where we can, right?
Yeah.
So this was the first year we were, where we sat down, spent a lot of time.
Well, this is all special fund. The, the thing was, is we're looking at the line, our liner appropriation from the county, we use the general fund dollar.
Right.
You know, can we reduce that and hold it within the general fund, you know, that's, that's the thing, so. Four fifty, five hundred, I'm comfortable with. Uh. If you guys generate something more, then that's a plus for next year.
Right.
But I think that, that was our biggest question, and for the other courts, it was these guys that we really wanted to talk. Your numbers are great.
Mr. Mahal.
The only thing I know is, is. If the county gets broke like they did last time, we do not have the jail or the members in the sheriff department to get rid of. We don't have that to fall on next time.
What's your favorite turnover rate in your, in your office?
I'm sorry.
Turnover rate in your office, is it, do you just talk about a position or two?
They had a few, few people shift and a couple people leave, the. We see the front of the court clerical position seems to be. One people either don't like or find something different, so that one was the one that opened up, like. I think I've hired my third person for that, and other than that, we've had, probate court, we've had. One lady go to, back to college. We had two take jobs with the state, we're from home. Um, I think that's, yeah, there may be one more missing.
So we've hired in positions because it tends, what tends to happen is when we lose somebody in a position, if there's a hierarchy there, they'll shift.
Mm-hmm.
They'll ask to shift, we'll give them that opportunity to take the new position and then, so we have one position up there that appears as though we've hired over and over and over again. But you've gotta look at, in that process, how many of, that, you know, as the entry level positioner, as a, as a position, were they shifting? Into, um, did they shift? So it, we had, like you said, we had to go back to school. Um, to take jobs with the state. It. Blindsided every time.
Like the state jobs, because of the position they're in.
Mm-hmm.
They get to see what opens up at the state level. Whereas you're, right, but they're there every day.
Yeah.
They're looking every day.
Mm-hmm.
Because once you get there, you figure out, I wanna look every day.
Mm-hmm.
Whereas John Q Public, he never looks.
Right.
You know, nobody ever looks.
Well, we're talking about budget and obviously longevity helps with budget, um, is there anything indeed on our end as far as re- re- retention? Stepwise?
I mean, we can talk about comparable salaries in surrounding counties, but I, but I'm not, you know, I mean, legitimately, we, we've, we've had people take. Because they can move to Roscommon County and make a buck more an hour, that would, that was the mo- one of the most recent ones we lost. Um, I, you know, I can't, I can't fault that, um, I understand where, you know, I'm on the budget committee here, I understand where we are and, and what we're looking at and, and. I'm fully aware of, of the position that we're in, so, um. You know, hopefully that will, hopefully we'll start to see some growth there, um, that will, that will make that less likely.
Yeah, he's tired of training people, so.
So it's a cost, isn't it?
Yes.
I mean, plain and simple, it is.
Yeah.
You guys are losing somebody with seven years of experience, that's hard to replace.
Mm-hmm.
And you may have to go through a couple people before you find a fit.
And we're small.
Trying to avoid.
We're two small offices where that's the institutional allowance losses is. A huge, huge, huge challenge.
I'm sure these jobs are stressful in the courts, it's not fun. Anything else, guys? I guess that we come up with a number, we didn't really make a decision, or tonight's just kinda conversation?
It's, it, it, this is helpful to me and, and bottom line is, I'm probably not gonna touch it. At this, at this point, and especially if the appropriation in the general fund is dropping, there really isn't any reason to. Set a hard and fast rule just now, but this is one that, um, it, this is just a few of these that make me nervous, this is one that's right at the top of the list. Because you just don't know, there's no way to predict it, and I think it's in a pretty good position right now, so maybe we just. Don't tinker with it.
Well, I guess. This comment to answer Roger's question, if we needed to, we could, our appropriation this year is two hundred and forty-five thousand. They have a four hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollar, uh, uh, fund balance. We could take two, two forty-five right out of that fund balance and take, and keep our two forty-five in the general budget. So, there's, there's.
You did that two years ago.
Yeah, there's a quarter of a million dollars right there that we could keep in the general fund. So, uh, to say that there isn't a place to get it. There's a quarter million we could get.
I- and the opposite goes to that, if we, if they need it and we don't have it.
Yeah, they don't need us, yeah.
Try to avoid.
Right.
So that could go both ways.
Yeah, it, it can, it can, but you know, if it's catastrophic and there's something on the general fund side that's just gonna. Just gonna there, take us out, but with the projected fund balance that we have in the current fiscal year. Plus the next fiscal year, I don't see, I don't see a catastrophic change.
Well, did not just say that.
Not on the general fund side, now on there.
You have no idea what the state or what he's gonna do.
That's my.
I don't.
I don't.
I don't, yeah, you can see it if you want, but I don't.
My biggest fear is the reimbursement.
That's what I.
Yeah.
I don't know what's gonna happen.
Federal, state, all of it.
Especially with the F O C budget, I mean, that, that is, functions out of, out of Health and Human Services, Medicaid. You know.
And they're freaking out right now.
Right, so if, if they start, if, if we start seeing cuts in Medicaid, we could see cuts to a lot of revenue lines in front of the court. You know, and the friend, on the friend of the court side, we don't know. So that fund balance there now, is it, uh, just the same as the other, the other fund balance, it. We don't need it today, but I don't know what's gonna come from the, from the state when they say. We can't give you these, these two revenue lines anymore because the feds cut us. We just don't know.
I think this year's gonna be shaky, once we get past this year, I think we'll have a better understanding of.
Yeah, I agree.
Just gonna hold.
I agree. I agree.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
Over a hundred thousand. Front of the court fund balance. But like I said, without knowing the future, we'd rather just leave it there, but.
But if there was flexibility, if there was a need, that's, that's the place that we'd wanna look. At least. Friend of the court, as far as the fund balance goes.
Hey, thanks, guys.
Thank you, appreciate it. Sorry to take all your time.
Billy, this whole.
Thank you.
Department fund balance. Brian, come on up. Thanks for coming. Do you have anything for us?
Oh, you invited me.
Your fund balance, can you, can you, uh, give us a little bit of a breakdown? Give us a little information. Your, your fund balance looks, looks good, which we.
Right, and we haven't had a fund balance before he stepped on.
Okay.
Because we, the money was. Our department used to have to have money fed into it from the county. Now that we're, uh. There's no tax funds in our office. It's just permit fund only. We're able to. Now, I mean, we've been frugal with their money. We don't spend it on anything. But. Craig's probably gonna retire. He's sixty one, sixty two, somewhere near. So in about three years, we're gonna have to find probably two people. To find someone with all three licenses. We don't know if we can get that. And then, you know, I'm looking at seven years retiring.
You calm down? Does it kinda sound that way?
Yes, when my wife gets old enough to retire, I can retire. But, well, who knows, seven years might change my mind too. But.
How do you feel with this fund balance? I mean, it's, what, what is it exactly? I don't really call it.
Three ninety five, four seven one.
Three ninety five.
Three sixty two, seven.
Building inspections department.
Yeah. Three sixty two, seven fifty six.
Look at mine showing three oh one.
The three sixty two came straight from the auditor. Um, also, uh, looking at, uh, what the end of this fiscal year looks like based on the current expenditure trends in your department. That may be the difference that you're seeing.
Oh.
Is your, your, uh.
Well, and the other thing is, is I still don't understand why we're having such good years the last three, four years. I mean. Yeah, there's a lot of new homes this year. Again, I don't. That's could be part of it, but, um.
We're growing too. I'm a little progressive.
Yeah, yeah. Some commercial stuff coming in, but.
Commercial stuff coming in, bringing jobs. Maybe higher up for the managements.
Yeah, right.
Commissioner Wilson?
We have two vehicles.
Yeah.
How, how are they?
They're in this condition. Mine's got thirty one thousand miles on it and Craig's probably close to forty. They're two thousand twenty two.
We get them with ARPA funds, right?
No, I didn't get any ARPA funds. I paid for them out of our budget. I come in and asked and I come in and asked and was denied.
Purchased for good reason.
I do.
What's that?
So in one truck we purchased, which is almost identical, uh, to yours, uh, for equalization and planning, and that wasn't our purchase.
Yeah.
Easy to confuse them.
Question.
Yes.
Uh, this fund balance is, is high and I, obviously, I think, you know, as a county, we're progressing. I think more people are retiring here, which is good. But are there any other items that we could be looking at expense wise here?
I couldn't. Digitize our records instead of going with the paper stuff that we have. But I'd have to look, that would probably be pretty expensive to do. I'd get people that email me all the time that wanna. Scan all of our stuff in and I think registered D's did that years ago. Digitize a lot of their stuff.
It'd probably really make your job a lot easier.
It'd be easier to find things sometimes, especially we got stuff over at the old jail yet.
And you'd probably also probably even get more compliance.
So I'm, I am getting some digital plans in. Right now. Going to load a lot of our expenses, the computer stuff. I mean, we just bought new computers. Help pay for the database.
So are you looking at a plan for digitizing?
I think I will. I think it's a good time to do it now.
Yeah.
So I haven't.
You're solid a little bit.
No, I haven't. I haven't dug into it. I just had some emails about it a few times, but worth.
Do we have any idea roughly what something like that would cost? I mean, that probably Tom Spencer would help with that.
He might. It's gonna depend on how many plans we have to digitize. Really, I think that's gonna be what determines it. I have no idea what our archive looks like.
I mean, roughly, fifty thousand dollars or?
I think it's more than that. I think it's more than that, but.
Any other costs you're looking at? And for the next.
Costs coming in.
Could there be any, any, um, uh, surprises, I, I guess? That you could possibly foresee?
Well. We. We've been able to get a lot of our code books and stuff. Through this program that we are with our Northern Michigan Code Official Association. So we pay, I think it's four hundred and fifty dollars I pay a year to access eighty some thousand dollars of code books. That we don't have to purchase. So, well. If we can keep that going because they're starting to drop that, our, our organization's keeping it going. But Saginaw, Detroit, all them, they lock, they dropped that. So. That possibility, we might have to have to buy, we don't have to buy the eighty thousand dollars worth of code books, but. We'd have to buy more code books than what we currently buy. We just buy the Michigan code books that we carry, but we don't buy that, the. The fire code and, uh. Oh. There's a, you know, there's a lot of codes we reference out, out of the code, I mean, out of that program that we're with. So every year we've been able to get it, but every year it's good and tougher to get.
Tim, do you have anything to add to this?
Yeah, um, as far as the fund balance is concerned, I don't know how long those vehicles would last, but it would not be a bad idea to. Reserve some of that for vehicle purchase when it does come time. You're looking at what, forty thousand dollars a pickup?
Yeah, I think I paid thirty two a piece for the ones we bought, but that was my deal.
Yeah, yeah. And we're a few years away, obviously, from having to do that. So we gotta reserve it like now, but I think it's just something to keep in mind and then, uh. The digitizing, I would encourage you to, to look into that more, uh, because the less stuff we have to store on paper, I think the better off we're.
Right, cuz I have three rooms I got.
Yeah.
Plans and prints in.
You're still doing things on paper? Now, or is this previous?
No, we're still doing our permits and stuff on paper.
Ooh.
Well, I mean, they gotta post them at the sites and stuff.
I get that, but I would think that there would be dual. I'm just.
There's.
I'm just.
I have a little bit of digital, but not, not a ton. Because I don't have a scanner and stuff to scan that, big plans and the stuff.
Here you go. You got a fund balance. Get after it.
Yeah.
Well, I would print all the, the permit itself.
Yeah, the permits, every, everything's permitted. It's, it's, um.
But you print.
I don't, yeah.
Would be nice for, so you are planning on retiring in seven years and unfortunately, this is the way the world is going. Not that I disagree with, with you, but. I, I mean, this is, this is obviously something we need to start looking at. Not a huge fan myself, but I think that this is the direction we.
Yeah, absolutely. Right.
For many reasons.
You know, on program, it's not cheap. We all know that.
Correct.
Last time we updated was twenty some thousand.
So here you, you're talking about scanners and everything else, training and programs, and I mean, there goes that three hundred thousand.
Yeah, go quick.
It'll go quick.
So. Anything else?
I'll talk to, to Brian. We'll brainstorm and we'll bring back a proposal by the time we're ready to approve the budget and say we wanna reserve X for. Scanny, X floor vehicles, whatever that might be, but we'll bring a plan forward so we can take up on that.
Yeah, but just over the last four years, you've, you've increased your. You've increased your fund balance almost threefold, two and a half or two and a half times. So once again, we're, we're back to where we could pull something off, you know. Like, um, answering. Roger's catastrophic issue is, is we can, there's another place to draw something. Not, not as big as what we were talking before, but.
Or the other way we're gonna have to do it was lower permit fees.
I was just gonna, I thought that's where he was headed with that.
No, because it's supposed to be, the office is supposed to be permit funded.
Yeah.
So, yeah. We wanna be able to stay that, keep that balance going that way.
Well, I'm not opposed to that either. I think you charge too much already.
A little conflict of interest above that. I, I think we, we've been very clear. We look at. What our bordering counties are, our permit fees are right where they should be.
Yeah.
I think you guys are doing a great job. I appreciate you guys doing a breakdown to see, I think.
Well, we're doing it, we're doing it with less people. And it's just two of us, so.
Right, technology. There you go. Get after it, Brian.
All right.
Okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, Brian.
Sheriff's Office position request.
Good evening.
Good evening. I, I think I missed this. Was this on here? Was there anything on iPads about this?
Nothing independent, other than the request that the department submitted, uh, that included.
I don't mind.
Included, uh, allocation of sixty eight thousand, six forty for a detective sergeant position. Is that right, Sheriff?
Yes.
Okay, um, I, it's highlighted in the, of the proposed budget. And, and, um, suggestion I've made to you in a prior meeting was, uh. From my angle, it can be justified in the sheriff's office budget for sure, if you want to do that. I think it would be more likely. Uh, to go into the village budget only because what's being generated for that position is being generated from road patrol.
Right.
So if something happens, you need the positions and that's, that's what's generating the work for it. And that included it in either budget at this point, pending your conversation here, whether that's even a direction you wanna go. But that's was the crux of it. Now, we did have a law enforcement committee meeting prior to this. Uh, we got into some other subjects. We got into the vehicle purchase, uh, with the USDA grant. Uh, we talked about animal control position and was there another one?
Academy.
Academy, okay. Um, so those, those are all sort of on the table, but particularly the. Animal control position, there may be a new direction, you know, if you wanted to, to go that we could consider. Uh, and of course, the, the requested, uh, position itself and the, the use of the USDA grant in that one is actually. Uh, has the clock ticking a little bit louder than everything else because of the deadlines for that grant.
Sheriff, you're the floor. Do you wanna explain this position or I guess I'm, what page you had on the budget?
Uh, page eleven. Page eleven for the general. And then the road patrol milage is in the special funds, page two.
So this is. Nope, go ahead.
Uh, basically, we, we put in for a detective spot. And, and primarily what that would be used for is to keep our cops on the street, our patrolman on the street, because we got some high, uh. We got some big cases that takes a, a lot of time for investigations, interviews, so on and so forth. And all them bigger cases would be shifted to the detective spot. And that would relieve the, uh, road cop to get back out on the road to do the, the meat of the road per se, so. Anyway. All the time that I've been there, we've always had that detective spot and it's always worked pretty well to keep everybody out on the road. Uh, we are looking at some pretty big cases right now, um, that's gonna. Detail a lot of extra investigations. So basically, what we wanna do is just keep the, the big investigations towards detective spot of it. And, oh, you know, get them, get them cops on the street where they need to be.
Question. Um, one of the concerns I've had with this, we made our law enforcement meeting before this, um. So. If we were gonna make a detective position, I understand to a point what you're saying, Sheriff, is that. This would take off some relief from a road patrol deputy doing office work. But we're actually taking a road patrol deputy full time off the road to create this position. Right?
I don't, would, would you plan on another whole position for that or?
The proposal is a whole different position. It's detective, so they will be assigned with investigative duties. So homicides, you're frauds. I have a fraud investigation right now, which is twenty thousand plus dollars in child support. So when I build a budget, I proposed in the three oh one as opposed to the two fifty nine, cuz the two fifty nine is road patrol. It's road patrol activities. I say that that stays the same with your eight, your bare minimum to keep your operations on the road.
But we don't have that right now.
We don't have that right now. We are building again towards that with the situations that have. We do have a recruit that is gonna be starting on the eighteenth of August. Uh, which we'll talk about here shortly, which will give us a full staff back again, much like the jail. That we'll be able to build and move forward for, so. This will be another person. If it was an internal promotion, then yes, there'd be another vacancy in the road patrol that we would have to try to fill again.
So with that being said, is this gonna be an internal promotion?
By contract and with, uh. You know, being a small office, you're gonna offer it internally first. And go through that process. I don't know that we can circumvent the contract, especially after the new one that has been passed that has that promotional process in there. We'd have to go through those steps before we would actually advertise for a promotional.
Um, so my, my concern with this is for, we, we all know here, you know, it's twenty four seven that our county residents are paying for. We know we've been short staffed for how long? We do, I mean, Sheriff was gonna tell you guys tonight, we had a L E meeting, um, in two weeks. They are sending a county resident to academy at Delta, which is great. But you, obviously, I think you guys know who you're gonna hire for this. It's within, with inside. The division, so now we're gonna be going back again, short staffed. Therefore, again, it's just gonna be another excuse why we can't have twenty four seven. I'm telling you guys, I am concerned that the public is gonna continue to see this. And if we lose that road patrol milage, we lose seventy five, eighty percent of our sheriff department.
Well, you'd lose all your road patrol. The milage goes away cuz you've moved road patrol operations to the mill. Not to say seventy five, you would have to recreate the sheriff's office. If the milage goes away.
We've had such a hard time to even get, uh, there's nobody applying, no hard time to get a candidate. Now, we do have a candidate, which we don't have a crystal ball. Last time we had two candidates, they both got injured and didn't even make it through academy. I, I think we, we're getting a little ahead of ourselves here. I think we need to get full staff, see where we're at, and then go from there.
This point of the conversation, I.
I know, I'm just.
Putting this budget together and we had, we have a need for investigative services. We have that death investigation we talked about at the L E meeting. We had to have some investigative service to, to support the road in these major investigations. You know, when we have residents that are being frauded out of thousands and thousands of dollars, that's a very intensive investigation. Requires search warrants, requires, you know, a lot of efforts and time going back and forth to the courts, interviews. So the need is there. It's just the timing of it. You know, I proposed. It in the three oh one to support the road patrols with milage stays with road patrol operations. We had this recruit. Knock on wooden. Everything goes well, we'll be fully staffed, and then we'll be talking about if it's approved, looking at a detective sergeant. And we'll go through the process. And again, I don't know contractually that you can even not start internally. And I think as a small organization, you owe it to your employees to at least start internally. And then look to external if you don't fill it internally. But how do you, a small department, there's not as much opportunity for advancement. In these rural departments, these offices, so you gotta offer it to them.
Um, so obviously, I think we all do know that with technology and fraud and the amount of people are trying to get. You know, get something and not have to work, it, it's happening more. So I do understand the fact that, you know. Part of our service is that we need, if we have constituents of the county that are having these issues, they need to have somewhere to turn to. And we need to have some way to be able to try to help them. Is there any way you can give us data? I mean, of how, how often we're, we're, we're getting constituents that are coming to you guys with this type of information? So we can see some data that backs up why we need to do this?
In the early stages of working with, uh, the administrative assistant and dispatch to come up with a couple of different areas of compiling some numbers. So I'm, I'm looking at something right now that could fit into that. I mean, obviously, I could go back through our report system and pull out the different ones that we're dealing with. We talked about the death. Infortunate death at the camp here a couple of weeks ago. A major investigation that was brought in my ocean and all those fraud complaints. C S E, yeah, C S, your. CSC, yeah, CSC, your, your assaults, especially juvenile assaults, I mean, those are another one that you have your CAC interviews and those type of things. Your investigation services could assist with that. So that's what the proposal is. And yes, I can, we can glean those out of the stats that we're, we'll pull from dispatch. I know he's pulled dispatch, uh, reports before. My intent is to try to get that again on a regular basis and that information forward and a couple of different media type things.
I just have one more question, and I, I don't know. So when it comes to like these type of issues that we want to be able to, um, be able to offer better service to, does the Michigan State Police also, where, where is that separation? Where do they get involved with investigations on their end? I mean, how, how does that work?
Well, Michigan State Police does have detectives. They are now based out of district as opposed to each post, but they're assigned to a poll. So they do the same type of work, detective work, but it's based out of the MSP post and the assignments that they handle. So the instance of West Branch, you have four counties that they are involved with.
That's been.
Right. When you're dealing with MSP, they also do investigations for neighboring districts for major cases. So let's say there's, uh, a shooting. It is the most, they'll bring a detective from West Branch down to do the investigation for a shooting in Flint. Or a shooting up north in Elma, you know, type of thing.
So with, with that being said, and again, we are a very rural community. We have, you know, very lean numbers. Again, I've been very adamant that we need to have road patrol officers on the streets protecting our constituents. So this sad situation that we talked about today that happened with this seventeen-year-old man, why can't the state police take that over? Why can't you say, we need you, the state police, to take this?
I don't know, but they wouldn't. But it's our complaint. It was our officer, our deputy that was the sign to it initially. Uh, whether they weren't available, they weren't the closest car. But once an agency starts an investigation, another agency will not pick up that investigation and continue running with it. Now, if it's a different jurisdiction, sometimes you can make a case and get another jurisdiction and an agency to take that and move it forward, but that's because it happened within their jurisdiction. So the, the prosecution will occur for there, but because those cases come to the sheriff's office, to the deputies, then they stay internal. MSP will not take ours and move forward with it.
Commissioner Scott.
Well, Charlie's touched on a few different things here. One thing is information. All my time I've been here, uh, Detective Stall was in, in place. I asked numerous times about reports. I kept getting this crap about, well, we can't talk about ongoing investigations. So I said, well, how about this stuff that's history? The stuff they're already sentenced. They've gone to, they've gone to prison. Can we hear about the highlights of the case? Never did. This is the same problem I got with Sting. Sting people, they used to come in and talk to us once a year. They don't even come by anymore. They just want money. Yeah, I just like to know what's going on. We don't know how often detectives are used or anything because we never hear about anything. You know, people ask me, you got a drug problem in your county? No, we don't have no drug problem here because I never hear about a drug bust. Nobody ever tells me we busted somebody for drugs. So as far as I know, we don't have a drug problem. Um, my biggest thing about the sheriff's office, we promised the voters twenty-four seven. And I know I've said this many times that I did not want twenty-four seven on a ballot, but they wanted it on. And as the sheriff has said, it was a selling point. Well, that's great. It's a selling point and it's sold. Well, when you sell the product or the service, you fulfill the service. And we gotta go twenty-four seven. We gotta get to that point. And just like Charlie said, I think that because you're gonna have, you're gonna have requirements for this detective's job that somebody within the sheriff's department now is gonna be able to fill it. You're not gonna hold the bar high enough that nobody can get, fill the position. Somebody will fill it here. And if they fill it here, it's taking a cop off the street. So we're down one now. We can't fulfill other than summertime because of the school resource hostage. We can't fill that eight positions, the, those eight positions we need. It's gonna take us three, four months to get through the, through the, uh, academy process. Hopefully, they make it all the way. It's gonna take another three months as the ride, the ride along situation until we're, we've been down this road. We know how long it takes to do all this stuff. But in the meantime, if I approve this, October one, I know you're gonna have somebody in that position. October one, somebody's in that detective's position. And I, I would, I would make a wager on that. And at that point, it's gonna be a road deputy. And we're down another one. And we're down a whole shift then, for sure, a whole shift. Because it'll be two guys now. One's in the academy, not patrolling our roads, and one's a detective, not patrolling our roads. So I'm back to that thing. I can't have twenty-four seven like I promised the voter. That's where I'm at.
I, I guess, I'm sorry.
That's fine. Go ahead. I'm already too excited.
Yep. So I, I guess I have a few concerns. First of all, I appreciate you guys coming here and talking to us. Um, talking about this, this kind of threw me off. I, I was, uh, totally surprised by this. I think maybe it's because we just completed negotiations and Tim, tell me if I overstep here. And we approved the two positions as far as sergeant lieutenant. Um, we had a lot of conversation about this other position. I guess now it's a detective and we were looking at two sergeants and a lieutenant. Do I have that correct or?
Right. Um, I, I don't understand the ranks.
There's a lieutenant and a sergeant.
Yeah.
Right, but you, originally, there was gonna be two of one and one of one.
Yeah, sergeants and lieutenant, right.
So I, I'm, I'm gonna agree with the, the commissioners over here. I've, I've been at two, um, meetings this week. And at both meetings, I was asked about twenty-four seven road patrol. Um, people have their summer taxes. Uh, I, I gave them the information that I had, which there was an audit done on that. I appreciate that email. We got information as far as when there was twenty-four hour seven road patrol, when there wasn't some rationale behind it, which, um, people in the community are talking. Uh, I know they act differently. They ask different questions when you guys are present. I get that, but we are getting hammered on it. And maybe it's because taxes are in people's hands and it's hot on the, uh, conversation right now. I, I, I'm, I'm surprised by this. Um, I'm not dead set against this in the future, but I, I think I'm gonna go back to timing on this right now. I think once we are all fully staffed and we can go back to our residents and say, we, we do have, um, twenty-four seven, we are in a good place. I don't disagree with cases. There's a lot of them right now. They're very complicated and I don't foresee that getting better. Um, so I, I think we'll be open to conversation. I just don't think the timing with us just settling these other two positions because of promotions that we're given, you know, are we gonna run into that same thing here? Hopefully not. As we did last year with all of this.
I, I don't. We'll repeat.
Okay. So I, I'm, it's on everybody's minds. Or it should be if it's not. I mean, again, I, I guess, I think right now I'm going to agree, uh, uh, with these guys that we need to go back to our constituents right now and say, this is being covered, that we got this. Um, we've double-checked, we've triple-checked and, and now going back to school resource officers we're losing to, um, are possibly losing to. I, I'm just not comfortable right now until I can say we're giving this service because I really am gonna hate to, uh, lose that millet money. Um, I think we'll be in a lot more trouble if that happens. But I appreciate you coming. I appreciate the information. I, I, maybe it's gonna be something in the future, but right now I just can't say yes to that and that is my reasoning. Commissioner Mayeou.
We talked about taking ones out of the school.
Correct.
Because we don't have the road patrol. And I mean, I know it's gonna be ugly if we did that. Something happens to the school, we're gonna be lowering snails, but yeah, the voters, wherever we go, we're, we are getting quit pretty hard. It, it ain't no fun.
It's not.
Well, on a positive note, I'm gonna be sending one to the academy, August eighteenth. Gonna be, uh, paid through the GI bill in Michigan Works, so.
Fantastic.
That's a, that's a positive note and that will give us a call.
I, I will say, I, I said this before, this is the time you ask and I'm glad you ask. You know, and this is the time you do it instead of mid-year and stuff like that. This is the time to do it. And, and I'm not saying that, I don't wanna say that you, you know, that, yeah, that's all I'm saying. Now is the time.
There's another topic we need to talk about is that animal control. I'm gonna turn it over to the under sheriff, um.
Uh, we wanna go there next? Again, I just wanna go back to.
Game of that?
I think we have to. I think it's very important that you.
Right. Put the budgets together and, and one of, as I expressed, the need for investigative services, all the time that you build it into it to keep this discussion going. At some point, we would look at seriously when we get everything to where everybody's comfortable, that would be the next thing that we'll need to address. That's, so that's why I included it in there so we can continue the discussions.
Appreciate that.
Um, animal control. We have a part-time employee. He's taken a full-time position with another county. Uh, he left his other full-time employment, which was outside of county government or that type of thing. His supplemental employee employment was gonna allow him to do part-time duty, still maintain what has been established in Elma County at the time. It was gonna work. It was gonna give us afternoon coverage and some weekend coverage. He was willing to do that. Things are flexing with his other situation down there. So I guess the point of this conversation was should we discuss changing the animal control budget and making it a full-time position? Uh, dispatch, we can go talk to Jesse and dispatch. We could get information from our current animal control officer and I know Scott would back it up. There's enough work in animal control, calls for service and that type of thing to warrant a full-time position. So I think the discussion that we should have is should we look at a full-time position? Then we could open the door to a conversation with our current to see where he would like to go and then go from there. So.
I do appreciate the emails that you sent to us this week on the animal shelter and cost and animals and there's quite a bit of information there.
So, yeah, it's.
I made it through about three quarters of it, too.
It'll be a monthly, uh, still in the development, um, like was indicated in the email. I went to the board, the shelter board. I had a good conversation with them. I'm confident that at the end with what's been provided by Tim or myself, that they're gonna come up with a report that's gonna meet kind of what we're looking for. And they agree that doing it monthly is gonna be better for them and for everybody involved. There's a post to the quarterly that I started out as, so. Moving forward, we should see that information on a monthly basis. So I'll keep forwarding that and all four as, as soon as they finalize their financial, what's that gonna look like? And then we'll see a final product as far as that animal control and shelter contract services and what it's gonna be, so.
Does that millet support a full-time officer?
I'm gonna frame this in terms of the time we have left on the millet, which is through next year. The answer is yes. We could, we could definitely do that. Um, with the part-time, um, model that we're looking at right now, I'm projecting at the end of next year, that fund balance is gonna be just over ninety-one thousand dollars. That's plenty to supplement the wage and then the benefits that would come with it if you do a full-time position. Now, as we said, at the law enforcement committee meeting, uh, the danger here is it's millet-supported. So if the millet is not renewed, then, you know, I mean, that's, that's just a drawback. It's not immediate. That's not something, you know, now, but by the end of next year, we'll be having to think about. That's the only drawback I can see to this. I, I think, um, in talking with Jesse over at nine-one-one, she's adamant that there are plenty of calls that they receive that would justify a full-time position. She had no doubt about that whatsoever. Um, so it just comes down to is, is that something that we want to do here? But yes, the budget can support it.
Kind of.
Commissioners.
Um, well, we had a really good, strong conversation, um, in the LE meeting today about this. And I think Commissioner Scott, I think echoes for the most part what I'm gonna say is, you know, we, we have the constituents now paying another millet for animal control. Took a little while to find an officer. From the time he started to now, I've heard nothing but positive things about the work that he's done. He's been busy. Jesse, nine-one, the, the calls are there for a full-time officer. Tim has made it clear that the money's there for it, that our constituents are paying for, for a need that we have. I mean, really, right now, we're at a point, if we don't offer a full-time position, most likely he's gonna be gone. Now we lose him, what happens? How, how long is it gonna take to find someone? We know this is a very niche, niche job. We could be looking at months and months now that we don't have an animal control officer. The issues are getting worse. The county residents are paying for a millet that they're not, for work they're not receiving. We don't want that. We have an opportunity right now. The money's there to offer him a full-time position. We don't know if he's gonna say yes or no. I sure hope he is. He is a county resident. Um, I think that we need to act on this immediately and I think we need to make this a full-time position and, and hope that he, he takes the position. I know it is millet-funded, but in Aran County, his job down there, we don't know, but it very well could be millet-funded as well. The residents are seeing the work getting done here. They know it's needed. I feel confident that that point two O, when this comes back up again, that millet will pass. And I really think we need to act on this now.
Commissioner Scott.
Well, I wasn't big on the animal control thing, but, um, I still like the idea reaching out to Aaron Act to see if there's any way we just collaborate something together. We, as, as Charlie just said, we don't know how they're funded. We don't know if they're funded by special millet or, or by general fund or, or however, um, but I think, I think this, this is a door that's opening right now that, that we could at least check into a collaboration with them. And maybe work out something of what is the needs for personnel for two counties. Um, uh, if we can afford, if, if, if we can afford it for one year, that's fine with me. I don't care. If it comes up, if it gets renewed and I, I would think that we'd probably have to amend the, amend the, the millet request then to keep a full-time person.
Not sure that's gonna be the case.
I'm not sure either, but I, I, I'm gonna bet you would, but I'm just gonna go with that.
I'm gonna wager at the board.
Okay. We won't wager at the board meeting. Um, but, uh, you know, it, it, the people voted for it and they want it, so, you know.
I think that's a great idea collaborating with, with Aranet County. We collaborate with Ross Common County on, uh, a lot of the courts thing, court things. I think that would be excellent to at, at least have some conversations there. Commissioner Mayeou.
Yes. That millet pays for both, right?
What?
The dog catcher and the shelter.
Shelter. Yeah.
Yeah. So if we make him full-time, that's like, they're gonna take a cut over there. They're not gonna get as.
No, they get the same amount. It wasn't based on animals.
Oh.
Where, wherever the dogs went, where the money went.
Well, it, that is true, but we're paying them a, already a set amount. It doesn't, it, it doesn't matter on how many animals are there.
Okay.
I'm not wrong on that, am I?
No, and there's not money in the fund balance in reserve to, to go on a year.
I didn't know. I mean, if it was.
Yeah, we had ninety-one.
They took care of both. He got, he got forty-nine and fifty-one.
Yeah.
Now this one here is gonna be sixty percent. Want to make sure they weren't gonna be shorted.
Yeah, no.
Right.
The millet will support a full-time officer for the remaining of this millet. I, I think we have to because I, I agree, we're, otherwise, and he may not take this full-time position, but maybe also Scott would come back. Who knows? But I, if we lose an animal control officer right now in the middle of this millet, the chances of this millet passing in the future. Um.
It'd be another.
Formed with, with us being, uh, televideo here. I mean, the people are, a lot of people, more people are watching these, these, uh, these meetings.
Today, sure is so.
So.
And I think the biggest thing of all this is this is really exposed to us that the need is there. The need is there. Our county residents want it. I mean, the millet passed. But my question is, and I'm just that adamant about this, is how fast, if we do make this decision, which I think we're going to, how fast can we offer this full-time position to him? I mean, I'd like to see it done tomorrow.
Yeah. Um, technically, you could vote to do it tonight to, uh, adjust the position allocation list to make that full-time. Um, I'm a little uncomfortable with that. I prefer to see you do that in the form of a resolution at a regular meeting and then we spell it right out. There's no question about what you're doing in that case. But you can't do it now.
I wanna see numbers. I wanna see it. I wanna see it on paper, what the cost is gonna be, what the millet is gonna. I wanna see numbers, I wanna see it, I wanna see it on paper, what the cost is gonna be, what the millage is gonna cost, I wanna, I wanna visualize it.
Full-time, he gets benefits?
Yeah, I wanna see all of it.
We can, we can reach out to him and say, hey, this is what we're thinking, you know, like, at least plant that seed.
Yeah, he's working full-time in Aranet County, he, I called him this week, I spoke with him, alright, let me rephrase that, I called him, he, he called me back, left me a message.
If we're reaching out to him, we should reach out to Aranet. We got a week between now and the next. No, no, we should reach out to the county commissioners, are they willing to just have dialogue about, uh, some kind of collaboration? Maybe they're not, maybe they'll just say, eh, we thought about it ourselves and we, we'd like to keep our own, you know.
Is, is there animal control officer operated at the sheriff's office too?
No.
They have, they have their own shelter.
I will make the contact.
We thought, we thought it was the treasurer's office, so.
I, I was thinking clerk's office, clerk's office, I think, I could be wrong.
Well, it's all the county building.
Yeah, it's in the county building.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm hearing a direction at least, would you travel from today through next week as far as different contacts and. And discussions that we, we can have.
Yes.
Tim?
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
While we're on, while we got the sheriff's office sitting here. We have a, a fund balance in the commissary. Fund.
Oh, we brought, talked about that. We talked about that last week, yep.
Well, uh, what's the shape of the transport vehicles at corrections? Or what kind of mileage do we?
They gotta be getting up, I don't know, do you know the, the vans? They're, they're getting up there.
What, what is that?
Except for that white one that we got.
Right here at the bottom of page here, it's. No, I'm on the, I'm on the, uh, fund balance trends here.
I wanna see that black basis got a hundred and forty thousand.
Uh, there, the one van I think goes two hundred, but again, I'm just talking off the top of my head, uh.
And we still have a smaller car for, um. We still have a smaller car, uh, right, still in the.
You have, you have the three vans, the primary vans are used for court transport and all that type of stuff. If we have like the situation where we're going to the hospital and that type of stuff, we're using like the Tahoe or we'll use another vehicle. So we're not putting mileage on the big vans type of.
Right, yeah, we bought the Tahoe so that we could. They're all. Rent for one or two at a time and that was it.
Yep, so they, they all do different functions as needed and as.
So how, how are you looking on the vans?
The vans are old, you know, we got the one through the surplus, the military surplus.
Okay.
I'm trying to find the last time that I did the mileage update to you. Not as easy as looking up.
Is there a plan for replacement vehicles, is that kinda where you're going with that?
Yeah, that's where I'm going, I mean, are you, are you, are you guys ready to come to us with something on that?
We had replacement program back when we started the C I D. And it all kinda went away as we started cycling through and much like with the USDA grants. You know, patrol cars also are a desperate need to start getting into that replacement cycle, cause as you know.
I can't use commissary for patrol vehicles.
Correct, but it's all part of the conversation.
I, I know, I know, but I'm at, I'm at a line here, a fund balance line. In a commissary and, and, and I can directly do something with corrections.
So let me, let me update the vehicle mileage sheet that I sent out here a couple of months ago.
Okay.
I'll get an update on that and I'll send it to everybody soon as I can, so that you have a mileage. But I, the two bigger vans are, the one is well over two hundred thousand, I'm pretty positive. We just had to do a battery in one of them, cause we had the other one was out getting a. Wheel bearing sensor and something else replaced on it, you know.
I understand you don't have to put all the white package on like you do a patrol car, but you do have to put the cage package inside and everything like that.
You have a cage.
There are different.
Cameras that are inside, you're gonna monitor your inmates, especially in those.
But we could, we could probably be in that. Seventy thousand dollar range.
Well, we could find something that.
Then we can purchase a vehicle.
Do you have?
Hundred and six.
Hundred and seventy-six, yeah.
Let me update the vehicle mile, that could be something we could look at or come back with, knowing that you'd be willing to. Look at using that fund balance for a correctional vehicle.
Well, I think with the, the corrections facility changing, um, you guys are putting a lot more miles on. Um, I mean, so that definitely needs to be. Being thought about. With the back and forth to all these counties.
We'll definitely look at, I'll update the mileage, so the one is, is over two hundred thousand, it's well over two hundred thousand, so and then. The one that we got was the military surplus vehicle.
Question. Could you then also do a pricing on what it would take to get a new van? I mean, obviously with this jail transition and the importance of the, uh, transporting our inmates, uh, you know, we have a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in a commissary funds.
Yeah, we start right with the MyDeal website and go to that vehicle thing somewhere.
What it would cost to put one together, I think it's a great, um.
It's a good idea.
The base price anyway, uh, the equipment is where it gets tricky, cause I gotta, you gotta figure out, cause like with the. The vehicles that are built into this budget that we propose to use the USDA, I had a cheat sheet being the city. Who would just purchase two vehicles that had those equipment packages, so. We'd have to do some research to make sure the right equipment is in that veh- vehicle that's gonna be used for transport and how much does that cost? But we can definitely get the base price off of MyDeal tomorrow.
Definitely a conversation, thanks, Paul. Thanks, guys, anything else?
Do we, do we wanna discuss that USDA grant, cause that's a decision we need to make too?
Oh, go ahead.
Well, it, it's built into the budget and, into the two fifty-nine budget as far as the USDA grants were coming up on the deadline where. It implodes. Um, USDA is currently not funding any new ones, they haven't for the last couple of years, so. Um, we've shelved this to this point and now it's a time to make a decision on purchasing a vehicle. Would MyDeal, um, we have a Tahoe option, which is more expensive. And then this what's built into the budget is the Dodge Durango, which is what the city went to also, uh, it's less money. Overall, and it's fifty-five, forty-five with USDA paying that fifty-five, so. I guess the question as we move forward with this is how do you feel about spending that money towards two new vehicles, towards the patrol fleet? Cause we should get going on it sooner rather than later, because it takes months. Now currently, unless we find one on a lot waiting for us, which I doubt we will. Uh, the second vehicle the city has on order, the first one they found on a lot, so. Um, that's the point of discussion, it's built into that budget there, um, we, Tim. Incurred with the, the numbers that were built into it, so I guess I just need to know that. At what point we kinda look at green lighting and even if it's next week, you make an independent. Authorized to proceed with vehicle purchases, knowing that it's gonna be in the next fiscal cycle. Maybe that's an option.
That, that's, that's where I'm headed, I mean, if, if I can extract some money here, we can put it into the budget. Put it right into the corrections budget for a purchase. And it'll be built right in, yeah, and then if it doesn't happen October one, it can happen November one, you know. For a red.
Go ahead.
I think Paul hit a good point, I mean, these USDA grants just aren't even happening anymore, we have an opportunity right now of seventy-five thousand dollars to offset costs. You know, we obviously still as a commission have, uh, you know, very strong united feeling that. We, we need to see our road patrol and we need you guys to have any vehicles that are gonna, you know, be operational and not have three hundred thousand miles, so. I fully support this with this opportunity we have, my only question is, if we talked about at the L E meeting, that I have heard some things about the Durangos. I know you guys just purchased some Durangos for the city, I would just like to know how much more it would cost for the Tahos. On top of what we have budgeted for the Durangos.
So as part of that Michigan or, uh, MyDeal research, I'll include the Tahoe prices, at least the base. And you, we can kinda take a look at, what the difference is there.
Does it have to be two vehicles?
We have grants, grants for two vehicles.
Vehicles, there's not.
It would be, the fleet needs it. I mean, realistically, we had set up before a two-three-two rotation, if you remember back when. That plan was originally done and several of the vehicles are quote to be in an operable. You're getting a hundred thousand miles on several of the Tahos that were purchased back in. Two thousand and one. Uh, the good news is the Dodge Chargers are gonna be coming back in twenty-six, so we will have another option in the mix. As far as moving forward with fleet management, but right now. I, I still refuse to buy a Ford Explorer, I just won't do it.
I'd like to see a list of them cars too, with all the mileage and what all cars you have.
I'll update that, vehicle spreadsheet that I sent out previously and include in the email as far as the Tahoe. The Durango and van price in MyDeal.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Secondary road. There's gonna be an adjustment to that, that you'll see once Tim and I do some of that work on it, um. Fifty-eight. Let me grab it real quick, so there's less money coming in on their secondary road, but.
Twenty-three thousand less, wasn't it?
I believe I was ninety-one thousand, there it is right here at the top, I believe. So if you remember, the secondary road grant has the state funding, state match, as long as county does their match. It's our secondary road enforcement, uh, program. In twenty-twenty-five, the total was ninety-one thousand five oh nine. Uh, just received the information for twenty-six, it's gonna be sixty-eight four ninety-six. So it's down significantly, uh, in the email that I sent to the controller, the explanation was per the email. Twenty-twenty-five higher due to one-time supplemental appropriation of five million provided for that year. So this sixty-eight is more of the reflection of what comes in from the liquor. Control commission, would, would they made that change? So we'll have to do some work on that budget. So that'll change before we get to the public hearing and that type of stuff, so.
That's a big change.
Well, I could look at the numbers and kinda move some of the stuff around a little bit, but. But to account for that change from funding.
You think you can pick up for that loss?
Well, take a look at it, I think we can, it's just gonna be a matter of. Where it shifts around type of thing, though I know some millage money goes in there as the county portion. Uh, so we'll have to take a look at that to account for that difference. But one of the things too, man, I'm sure you'll have to talk about accepting this also. Uh, next meeting, cause this is that system where we have you, myself, or the sheriff and treasurer set up. Electronically, you have to go in and accept it. Um, so if we could put that on the agenda, accepting the twenty-twenty-six secondary road. So that authorizing the access to your. So we can get your electronic signature and move forward with the acceptance of that. For the budget cycle. So I just wanna make sure that we got that on the agenda and.
Yeah.
The only other thing would be a school resource officer, what are we gonna do with those contracts? We're getting close to the school here.
You guys had conversations with the school at all?
I've not had any conversation, uh, with the school, I have the base contract that was discussed before. We're managing our personnel. We have the recruit going in there, we do everything we can to get up to full staffing and the twenty-four-seven operations and the school is going back into fashion shortly, so. The conversation needs to continue as far as putting those deputies back into, I mean, we have the rest of this fiscal cycle, but. I'm October one, we don't.
We did have a conversation with the school rep, you and I did, um, a month or two ago.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, so as far as the contract is concerned, I, I think, you know, we're both comfortable with the contract, physically with the contract. So what it comes down to is, um, are, you know, do you wanna renew that contract now? I realize again the conversation about the twenty-four-seven and I think that's where the hesitancy was, so it's, uh, just the open question now. Paul's stating here that the clock is ticking on that too, so we, we will have to make a decision here soon.
Did you guys have discussion about this at the law enforcement meeting?
A little bit, um, I'm, I'm on the understanding of, that the, uh. Ogumon super, superintendent is aware that we, that we tabled our decision. Uh, and, uh, and they have spoken to the city police. Their, the city police is not, uh, trying to get in there. But could build a plan if they needed to.
Oh, well.
Yes. I'm at liberty to say that.
You are?
Yes.
You sure?
Yes.
Cause you did.
Well, the mayor's here, he probably would know about it. Well, don't know about it.
I don't know how much the councils has for decision-making on it or anything, I don't know.
Commissioner won't say anything?
Um, I mean, obviously, you know, we talk about the twenty-four seven road patrol and the importance, we cannot lose our road patrol millage. But yet, the, the safety of our students is so important. And I really do not wanna see us pulling our school resource officers out of the schools. We do have a, um, candidate starting the academy. I'm gonna stay very optimistic, he's gonna get through, get trained, get on the road. I really do not support the fact of pulling our resource officer out of Ogumon Heights or Wyman Prescott.
I'd like to hear if the city is able to cover that.
I'm almost, I'm up for hearing anything, I'm just saying.
Have you heard anything?
No, I'm happy to contact the city manager and we'll talk about it, come back or we could even invite.
They got the mayor's number I can give you.
Do they have the staff? They shouldn't have anything to do with that. They have the staff, I mean, I don't know anything about.
I don't know.
Nothing.
I don't.
We do have to make a decision, I, I, I agree with that, Commissioner May, you have anything? Okay, so you let us know hopefully by Thursday?
Sure.
What else I gotta do?
Thanks, guys, thanks for coming.
Thank you, appreciate it, yes.
Elected official wages.
On the iPads, uh, it's all from a request from last meeting, I've broken down the, uh, those. Comparable county compensation rates. Uh, this commissioner sir booked asked, well, what is the sixty-fifth percentile, what's the sixtieth, well, I've broken that out for you. Uh, fiftieth through the seventy-fifth percentile, so you can see what, what those numbers would look like. Uh, same. Standards apply, um, my recommendation would be to do this over two years and then try to bite the apple all at one year. That we maintain the clerk registered deeds and treasures at the equal rates. And that we also maintain the chief deputy clerk, the assistant prosecuting attorney and the under sheriff at that same. Uh, differential, uh, from the, uh, chief elected official. Uh, so you've got that data in front of you, obviously you don't need to make any decisions tonight, but at least you've got something to look at.
Say that again, what do you, so what do you recommend?
I, I was on the seventy-fifth percentile, like I presented last time in my rationale, it's just simply to get us in, in the market range. And I appreciate that these are elected officials, but if we're paying under market, we're not gonna necessarily generate the interest when it comes time. Uh, for, uh, one of these positions to be elected. Uh, so that's the only rationale, going with any of these is, you know, obviously, as you can see, an improvement overall we are. It doesn't matter which of, of the choices that you select.
Is there any, is this cover everybody, is this all elected officials and non-union where?
So this is the elected officials and then their number two, if you will, so. You may recall, uh, uh, an attorney opinion that we received, it's actually published in the MAC newsletter, uh, last year as well. Uh, you already know, when it comes to an elected official, when you set the wage, you cannot reduce that wage for the term of office. And, uh, uh, opinion came out that said that also applies to their chief appointment, so these are the, the individuals, we'll use the clerk example. Or the clerk appoints the chief deputy and only the clerk does that, so that's why it ends up getting tied to the statute, uh, about setting where those wages are. So that's why they're included in this. Uh, as far as, uh, the others, there are a few other, uh, non-union positions that we would still need to address. I can think of I T, uh, right off the, the top of my head. Is, um, a, a separate contract, so we could, we could look at that to see what we can do, but it's the contract, just, just like the one I have. Um, there are a handful of others, I've drawn a blank on where they are, well, Veteran Affairs is, is another one. Uh, that you would be able to set, uh, that's a non-union. Uh, so we'll take a look at those as well, these are the ones that were, uh, listed in that Michigan Association of County Treasurers, uh, survey that was done. Uh, that encompassed all the elected positions, very good, very reliable data, uh, to work from.
Question.
Go ahead.
Um, obviously, I realize in the private sector, that's pretty much. Ninety-nine percent of what I do is, you know, your wages. Ninety-nine percent of what I do is, you know, your wages increases on performance. And the performance kind of sets your increases for the year. How you're set. Now, with this being said, if we set, say, we take the seventy-fifth percentile, everybody has to get that? We can pick and choose.
You can pick and choose. You can pick any number you want. This is just a a foundation to start working.
Okay, that that answers my my question, Big Ten.
All about raises a hundred percent. I guess, why, why are you thinking the seventy-fifth percentile?
In in my opinion, it puts us right in the sweet spot for the market. So if we're a private sector, we're competing, in our case, we're competing, you know, locally, because these are elected positions. Uh, but you want to set a compensation rate that is not necessarily the highest and certainly not the lowest. You want to be able to attract the most qualified candidates. And I've always fallen in my career to that seventy-fifth percentile, not too high, not too low, gets us right in the middle. In this case, who do we compare to? Because there aren't any other county clerks employed in this county. There's one. So we look at other comparable counties, counties our size, based on population. Based on taxable value, based on general fund budget. Uh, and that's how we do our comparisons, is to, you know, apples to apples as close as we can get. And so that is what was done with these. You may recall from the last meeting, there are three different groupings I chose. One of them was the sixteen most comparable counties. The second group was the eight most comparable. And frankly, uh, that's a pretty strong cohort, uh, because they are matching on most of those criteria. But then also, who, uh, how do we compare to the counties that immediately border? So those three criteria went into coming up with this uh, table that you see here. Uh, Commissioner Wiltsey's point well taken. You are not obligated to choose any of these. You could choose one at the sixtieth, one at the fiftieth, one maybe you don't do anything to. I mean, that's totally within your uh, authority to do that. I just want to give you a good foundation to work from. And again, my um, preference, you know, for me ruling the world, we do the seventy-fifth percentile.
I appreciate what Commissioner Wiltsey said, but I'm definitely not gonna do that. I I do, I a hundred percent appreciate and I understand your thought process there, but.
What, do what?
Uh, picking and choosing. Um, you know, these are elected officials, the the uh, public. What are these individuals in?
They stay in, they won't cross the the board?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Well, how about, we'll we'll take a look at our our drain commissioner. And maybe we need to have him come in and talk to us. I want to know what his current activity is. I mean, he's gonna go, if we would do this, for example, he's going from six thousand five hundred to twenty-two thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. I mean.
Well, in that comparison that you were talking about, that spreadsheet you did, you showed. In some counties that have. There's some counties that have a lot of drains, have a lot of, you know, like Gladwell County, neighboring to us, they have all those dams. That that makes a big difference.
I'm gonna appreciate, I I I'll take out of what I just said, I'll take the drain commissioner out of there, because I think you said Ogoma County has two drains.
Yeah, well, I don't know how many drains there are, but um, they're all over the map on each of those three groups. Uh, and it comes down to, as was just said, it comes down to that workload. I have no clue where where our drain uh, commissioner is. I think he'll tell you he doesn't want a raise. Okay, maybe he doesn't, but um, that those those are probably the most spread that you'll see on any elected official.
And I'm not saying. Saying, you know, I think we do need to have kind of a little bit of.
I think it'd be great to.
Well, I think.
To talk about this, because I, it's just a world that I don't have to enter into. I have no idea.
You know, a few years ago, we did this for, what was it, about five years ago? You were here, you talked about elected official raises, and we looked at different counties. No, we, when we did it, back a few years ago, well, we compared with sheriffs. Well, one sheriff, one one county, well, they gave them a car. You know, and and uh, that was the, and then its pay was a quite a bit different, you know. Um, uh, the one county had, they had different, different uh, different facets of the, of the uh. Of the job, so it differentiated quite a bit. Uh, I was really surprised with sheriff in some counties. The the things that they gave them in lieu of money. You know, so then when you just look at this, yeah, yeah, I mean, I think, I think. And we're boiling down pretty quick, but I think we need to take a real good look at that and start putting some. Uh, figures together and uh. I mean, we got all of this month in max.
There was raises last year, correct?
Hmm, no, there were not. I think there was zeros across the board last year.
Not on, not on the base bay. I mean.
Right, but uh, when we went into the budget year, I believe even the unions were at zero percent last year. Now, we did just negotiate contracts.
Right.
But um, believe, uh, I'll double check, but I'm pretty sure there was no increase.
No, we did not. Um, I I personally, by looking at this, what I, because we, things are looking better this year. I'd be more comfortable being somewhere in the middle, doing a fifty-five percentile this year. Reevaluating next year and and hopefully next year, just not putting it quite to writing yet. Maybe next year we can jump up to seventy or seventy-five percent. I'm a hundred percent comfortable with going to the fifty-five percentile at this point in time. With where we stand, but that's my opinion.
Well, I just don't want to, I don't want to go, my opinion's not go right down one percentile all across the board. I think we need to take a look at a a couple of different things. So three positions are the same on there. And and I'm not, I'm not opposed to keeping it like that, mirrored, three mirrored positions. But uh, uh, there's a couple other, I think we need to, I think we need to look at that, that sheriff and prosecutor. And of course, drain commissioner, I mean, that drain commissioner, I I I don't even look at this chart for the drain commissioner. I'm looking at more of a percentage increase there, and that's it, because the job hasn't changed any. And and it's just, it's too hard to compare with other counties.
But I'm I'm more geared at individual status, performance, people that perform, they're the raised. People that aren't performing, aren't as big of an asset to the county, they don't deserve as big of a raise.
How how will you make that decision?
It's how we feel, what we're seeing, what we're experiencing. Been here long enough to experience a lot of this. Say an individual feeling about you feel that stakeholders doing for their department.
Well.
But that's more subjective, I I guess, how how.
It is, it is, and and I think I'm gonna go by the position rather than the person. Um, I didn't, I didn't hire that person in, so the voter did. So on my own standpoint, I'm looking at a position rather than a person. But that's just my own opinion.
I I do.
It's just my own opinion, but I want to take a look at positions and how they come. They don't all, they don't all do the same jobs. And then what is in there? Is there in there, is there other things in there that's uh. That accounts for compensation? Like, like I said, Calcasca County up there, the big difference there was they gave them a car. When we looked at it, you know, he, they didn't make as much money up there, but he had a car. Well, we have given a car. Our sheriff drives a county-owned car. You know, and the previous sheriff did too, and probably the previous one there too. I don't know. I can't remember, but. Um, but it is a compensation. It is. I had a company truck when I worked for Waste Management and they figured that was compensation.
Well, for sure.
And it saved me a ton of money.
It's a big cap. I mean, there are people right here, they do the jobs. I don't know what it is. I can't go in there and say, you're doing a good job, because I do not know what they're doing.
Come sit with us for a day.
I got no time. Go do it.
Think that that's necessarily our job. Our job is what we're sitting here doing tonight.
Well, I mean, we can't go pick and choose, well, you're doing a great job. We'll give you a raise and not you. No, I I don't, I don't know everything they do. I can't judge that.
Staying within your budget, you're communicating. I mean, that'd be like them judging us. Uh, it's very subjective. I I'm very uncomfortable with that. The votes, the voters voted. Uh, I think they're all doing an excellent job. I mean, our budget shows that. I think a hundred percent they do deserve a raise. I'm just, um. At seventy-five percentile is a a big jump. I I, hopefully, we get there in next, in in two years. I'm personally comfortable with with uh, this year, but.
A question.
Go ahead.
You said, you think all of our stakeholders are doing an excellent job?
Um, looking at this budget, we definitely have, we're in much better uh, fiscal condition than we were last year. I'm not here to judge them. I don't have their their individuals underneath them, sitting here complaining. I I don't think that's our job. I I think that's the residents, the next time that we have an election, to make the decision.
It's all good, healthy opinions here.
I I agree. I.
Okay.
Well, I I think if we, my my fear, Commissioner Wiltsey, I understand what you're saying, and I I, I'm gonna read between the lines here, and I appreciate, and I don't disagree with what you're saying. But I think if we go down that road, it's gonna get even worse with communication with 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 us in that department. And I I I don't think we have.
I just, you said that they're all doing exceptional work. I just question that, so.
That's fair. But I, I don't want to.
But I also.
Want to draw lines even bigger.
I also see, I do, I see what you're saying there as well.
I'd suggest that there's a department here that wants to address this for something. They can, and then and they can leave if they need to.
Oh, yeah.
Well, it's not on the agenda yet.
That's probably.
Well, we're gonna be basically, we've talked about fund balances already a little bit, but we're in general discussion with Folsals. But I know Julie's here and if she has something she would like to address and.
We're trying to stay on task. Where where are you looking at, I guess? We're kind of at fund balances. Where are we at?
We're, well, we talked about fund balances. We've already looked those over.
We're right where you're at, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything specific, I just, I understand what the context was around discussions around the fund balance. But if you don't need to hear from me specifically, I also hadn't been here in maybe a month and a half, two months. So I'm just listening in, unless you have questions for me. Tim, do you have anything?
Where are we at?
No.
Balance, it's not that large. Um, the fund balance is just a continuation of our discussion. Commissioner Mahoney had asked if we would break this out on the sheet, so you would know which fund balances that you have some authority over.
Yep.
So the handout that you have on this agenda packet, uh, if it's highlighted in yellow in red font. That's a fund balance where you have uh, a a lot more say in. So whether or not, you know, the, just like we were talking about with childcare fund to pay, I mean, you can establish whatever you'd like with that. Totally within your authority. The ones that are not highlighted are generally earmarked for a specific purpose. So you get into, uh, I'll let you find an example here. Um, well, we talked about it a little bit with the uh, commentary, where that's restricted. It's gotta be something that benefits the inmates, okay? So that's a rule, so that's gonna restrict what you can do with that.
Right.
Versus the others where you can really uh, make moves at will. So that, that's provided. I am working on a narrative to explain why and what statute uh, is uh, referenced there. And you'll you'll have that at some point, but you've got it at a glance now. You can see that. And as far as general, and I'm very aware of the hour, I intended originally to go through that proposed budget in. In um, great, great detail with you tonight. I'm not gonna do that to you, but I do want to find out some things that have changed in this draft. Uh, some pretty significant things, first of all. Um, is a transfer that we've got something called a street and address fund, which was originally set up to help uh, get the address ordinance up and running. Well, the ordinance itself assigns the administrative responsibility to planning and zoning. Ryan does that work right now. And I proposed moving that three thousand six hundred twenty-three dollar fund balance out of that fund. And put it in the revenue and recognizing what we do in the general fund. And then I'll recommend that we just close that fund down. We're not doing new addressing ordinance anymore. There really isn't any reason to continue that fund. Same is true with soldiers and sailors. We generally allocate ten thousand dollars a year uh, to the soldiers and sailors. But when you look at that fund balance, it doesn't need another ten thousand dollars right now. So that's ten that you don't need to make the trend.
Isn't there a, isn't there a millage for that, though?
There's also a millage for that, and that's accounted for in the fund, so you'll see that, you know, you see the millage line, uh, so those aren't touched. Biggest change, and this was huge, we got the actuarial infomers for for the coming year. And what MERS does is breaks that down uh, on an annual basis, on calendar year. Uh, what the county needs to contribute to maintain is, in our case, our defined benefit plans. Uh, the first bit of good news, which really shocked me, was our funded balance at the funding level. Actually increased to eighty-four percent overall, for the county. We have one division that's at eighty-eight percent. That's huge. That's huge. So major step forward. But more impactful on the budget, I assumed we were gonna see an increase in that defined benefit contribution that we were gonna have to make. It's a decrease. It's a substantial decrease. It's a seven hundred thousand dollar swing from what I had originally recommended. To where we're actually gonna have to pay the coming year. Uh, huge difference. So right now, this budget that's built has a surplus built into it of just, just under one point two million. Big asterisk, two things. Number one, we have bargaining coming up. We have not addressed that in this budget, so we know there's gonna be expense there. I did receive uh, notice today about our insurance renewal for the coming year. That process starts with a lot of data that we have to provide to the carriers, but that's not gonna go down. So we do know there's gonna be an additional expense there. We're gonna open up audit proposals here in a minute. That's not gonna be a huge hit, but it is gonna be an expense that we'll have to allocate for. Uh, and then um. One other item I wanted to point out had to do with the jail utility line. Now, remember, we moved all those to the buildings and grounds, uh, two sixty-five activity uh, right now. But I know we've talked about, we shut utilities down at the jail, and the question was, have we had an impact? I proposed a budget and I'm very comfortable, posed a budget of utilities of seventy-five thousand for that building for twenty-six. The audited number in twenty-four was one hundred seven thousand, so that's a major drop. With the utilities that we have, obviously not using as much water and so on, but that's, that's a pretty significant drop. Uh, so that's uh, obviously programmed in here. The budget itself and the drafts, both the general fund and in the special funds. You'll notice that the upper left-hand corner, not only you see a page number, but you see a date. This is gonna be fluid, obviously, for a few weeks yet, so each time one of these is issued, you'll see a date there so that you can go to the most current one. Uh, and work with it. And I'll try to make sure that there's no confusion by getting rid of maybe some of the old copies on the iPad. So that when you do see them, you've got to work with. Um, obviously, there is time for you uh, to go through in in detail. Any questions you have, please forward them. Any suggestions, uh, and I'll keep everyone up to date if there are any other fluctuations in those numbers. But I'm not gonna go through that line by line with you tonight. We've got kind of a boatload of things to do yet, so uh, that's, that's the nickel tour.
Any other comments from department heads in the room?
Yes, yes.
I I got one comment. I just wanted to let Julie know that Commissioner Scott in the last meeting proposed raising your rent. Because uh, we have not raised, we have not set a new, raised the rent in seven or eight years now.
Right.
So I, you know, you've been living there pretty cheap and and our expenses keep going up, so.
I wouldn't root to that, so that was another reason that I thought it was a good idea to listen in and just.
Okay.
Gather what's.
Okay.
What's being chatted about.
Yeah, well, you add some extra money laying around and I think, and I, and Commissioner Scott gets a little greedy. So, you know, if he can grab a hold of some more rent money, he likes to do that.
Now, the the table that Tim created that shows a trend, shows a round of five thousand four hundred dollar balance. But if you'll recall, I requested that that be applied to a position that's being jointly funded by Ogoma County, Iosco County, and Alcona County. Um, and uh, that money hasn't been necessarily transferred in as revenue into my budget currently. Um, yet, uh, it's not a gap, but I'm working on making plans on how to apply. Any fund balance that I have to programs that benefit people in Ogoma County. So I'm, just so you know, should I end up with another fund balance, which I think I will. Uh, because my employee costs decreased this year, um, due to a change in employment. Uh, and and having a person with less seniority join. Join my department. Um, I will continue to think about ways that I can apply those funds in a way that benefits. Citizens in Ogama County. Brian, do you have anything?
Was way more complicated than what I suggested. I have any board appointments, tell me the reason.
Yeah, pardon me? Anything clerk?
Uh, no. I know. Oh, yeah, sorry. Yay.
Okay, are we in discussion items? Bit opening, audit services?
Happy to see this is gonna take a minute. We got seven proposals. In for audit services. And you have a big tabulation sheet. Now, before the meeting, you can put it right these down. So the process looks like this. When these tonight, do anything else? Got down with the, it is, uh, the way we've outlined the, uh, next steps in the. That the treasurer and I will get together and we'll rank these based on criteria that's in. We present a rank order to you next week. You can choose to, you know, award bid that night, I suppose. But the idea right now is that once you see that ranking and you've had a chance to, um, you know, consider that, that you may wanna interview. A couple, or maybe even all the firms. I notice seven of them would be a long knife. Maybe you don't wanna do that. Do you need? Um, but the, the process is though, we talked about next week, if you wanna interview in, any of the firms. And if we do, then the following week, it's gonna be the whole meeting. Whoever you wanna interview, we bring in. And the idea is that by the end of the month, you're ready to, uh, pass a resolution to hire one of these firms. So a lot of work to do on this yet, but very impressed that we got seven responses. Uh, we did get four other responses that were, we're not gonna bid. So of the seventeen that were sent out, eleven firms responded to Ogama County. And I think that's. So in rank order, the first one that arrived on July sixteenth was from Shoals, Oswald, Miller, and Edwards out of Alpena. And they're, uh, bidding for the twenty twenty-five audits, forty-eight thousand fifty.
Fifty?
Forty-eight oh five oh. Uh, and then they have, um, increases, step increases for, uh, twenty twenty-sixth would be forty-nine five. And for twenty twenty-seven would be fifty thousand nine hundred. And I'll get you a better summary of all this once we've had a chance to review them. Second one was received on July twenty-ninth from Maynard Custerison. Uh, this is the same firm that helped us with the infernal controls. Twenty twenty-five, their proposal is sixty-two thousand three sixty. Uh, for twenty twenty-six, it would jump to sixty-six thousand. In twenty twenty-seven, it would jump to sixty-nine thousand. Uh, just so you're aware too, we did have a series of questions come in, a lot of them repetitive from these firms. But just some very basic questions about the county. So I think, um, there was, you know, pretty good information that was distributed. About what this county represents in terms of an audit challenge. Uh, the next one that came in was from Gaybridge and Company out of Grand Rapids. They, their proposal was here on August fourth. The deadline was August sixth at eleven o'clock. Now, the instructions in the RFP said you put your bid on top. So this one didn't quite get there. So proposal for the twenty twenty-five audit is fifty thousand eight hundred sixty. For twenty twenty-six, they jumped up fifty-two thousand four hundred. In twenty twenty-seven, it fifty-four thousand. Next is from Stevenson and Company. Their proposal did arrive on August sixth at eight thirty. And this is our current audit firm. Gonna take a second.
He didn't listen. He spent so much. I gotta pay the government. He puts it right on the top, please.
My family has been foiled. So for all three years, their bid is fifty-nine thousand nine forty.
The more time.
Fifty-nine thousand nine hundred forty.
For, for all three.
For all three, well, per year, so.
Per year, for all three years.
Right. The next is from Andrew Schuiper Pavlik. They're out of Midland. Their proposal arrived August sixth at nine oh six AM. Their proposal for twenty twenty-five, sixty-two thousand five hundred. Twenty twenty-six would be sixty-four thousand two fifty. Twenty twenty-seven would be sixty-six thousand. They do have options for two additional years after that.
Where are they out of?
They're out of Midland. Next is from Raymond out of Saginaw. Raymond's proposal arrived August sixth at ten fifty-four, six minutes before the deadline. You can see with all these pages, it's understandable. For twenty twenty-six, their proposal is sixty thousand even.
Wow.
Twenty twenty-seven, sixty-three thousand. Uh, plus both cases, plus lodging, transportation, meals not to exceed an additional thousand. Uh, they did not give me a number on this page for twenty twenty-seven, but they did state for all three years. The total price would be one seventy-nine, seven fifty. So we can do the arithmetic. That is a big proposal. Seventh one came in was from Straley Lamp and Crinseling out of Alpena. I think they have an office in Rose City. Uh, their proposal came in August sixth at ten fifty-eight.
Yeah.
Two minutes to spare.
Well, I think.
Isn't it Shoals, Oswald, Miller, and Edwards? They're the ones in Rose City, not those, not these guys.
Both said Alpena on the.
Yeah, I don't think it was. I think they're all P and L city.
Not that, not really.
No, no, Shoals.
Hey, that's insane.
Yeah. They do some lip down chips around here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, they're all inclusive. Maximum price per year for each of the three years is fifty-five thousand seven fifty. So our range is from, uh, forty-eight thousand fifty, uh, on the low. Upper end is sixty-two, three sixty. That's, um. I'm glad they're all grouped. We don't have any outliers really to speak of. So again, uh, by next week, uh, Karen and I will have gotten together, uh, probably rank these independently first. And then get together and talk about it. Uh, go over the criteria. There's specific things that we ask for in terms of team members. Experience that they have, uh, and some other criteria in terms of how they would work, uh, comparison to, uh, what we do. Because the last thing we wanna do is create the audit for them. So we'll go through that and.
Especially for the ones we gotta feed.
Yeah, right. So, um, yeah, so next week, um, we'll have that done. And then we can talk about, uh, which of these firms, if any, you wanna interview. It's not mandatory. But I think with the prices this close, it probably would be a good idea.
Well, the one that runs lodging, well, we got an empty jail.
Yeah.
Put them over there.
Thank you. More to come on that. Before I, before I just wanna backtrack for a second, Tim, can you make sure we're, further discussion with the, uh, budget? That we are looking at everyone, utilization, IT?
Yes, yes, of course, on my agenda.
Record a budget adjustments.
Hey, again, not gonna go through this in great detail, um, but, um, there will be, uh, uh, resolution to do these adjustments. Uh, that will summarize this in just a matter of a couple of pages. Uh, one thing I wanted to point out was, uh, in the general fund. Um, and expect to see this happen in the third quarter, uh, as things start to come into focus. But, uh, the overall, the revenue will have reduced by fifty-three thousand three forty-seven. Expenses increased by seventy-six thousand five seventy-six, um, which would still have us on track for. Uh, surplus at the end of the year, eight hundred eight thousand. There are some, uh, lines in here that look like, particularly on the expense side, that we won't be near what we budgeted. But I'm not at the point yet to where I can say that with any level of confidence. So a lot of them are left alone. The big difference on this, um, proposal was the realization that revenue line has been a mystery to me for so long. Called the local community stabilization fund. This is one where one year we had over two hundred thousand. Uh, other years, it's been under fifty thousand. Well, this one, uh, looks like this year we'll be reducing that amount, that allocation by fifty-nine thousand. So that was the bulk of the reduction in the revenue. But on the other side of the coin, what that money is statutorily has to go to. It's actually at the health department. Uh, it has to do with maintaining, uh, you know, stabilized health, uh, um, programs in throughout the counties. And that being the case, that, uh, expenditure will increase, uh, significantly by a hundred fifteen thousand dollars. Now, this is a number that has haunted me for the last five years here, because we couldn't figure out the way we have to account for it. What this was for, why it was there. Well, we've now got the straight line. We know it's literally passed through from the state. But that line's gotta be, uh, uh, increased on the health, uh, department allocation line. This is not new money that they're receiving. They've been receiving it all along. It just hasn't been easy to follow in our budget. Now it is. Now we've got it figured out. But that's why the swing. The other areas that you see the most swing in has to do generally with. An employee who's, uh, uh, left and we're replacing that employee at a lower rate. Or there's been a change in health insurance and that can fluctuate quite significantly for us. Most of these changes you'll see are in that category. Others are just the, things like the, uh, uh, expenditure on the defined benefit. On the, uh, retirement plan and that number going down, decreasing. Uh, so that's the bulk of it. All of the special funds and the general fund are here for you to look over. Again, I'll summarize that in our, our common resolution. It's a down to about five pages summarizes them. Uh, you'll see that in a nice need package next week. Any questions that you have, uh, between now and then, just feel free to reach out.
Comments? You guys good?
No, I looked it over. I thought it was pretty good. And once, once you condense it, it'll even make up more sense.
We got a bunch of these on our iPads this past week too. For the budget.
Yeah, yeah, you did. And that's, you know, credit the departments. They're seeing where there are, um, uh, shortfalls or overruns and are correcting them, uh, where they can. They can't do the, uh, wage lines, the wager benefits, but they're really keeping track of those on wage and benefit lines. And they're doing a pretty good job keeping up.
Okay, the service and repair order.
So we got an, uh, order from Otis Elevator. Uh, this comes on the heels of, uh, an inspection that was done and we did not pass because we don't have. Uh, any ability to make a phone call. No, no emergency calls in the elevator. So if somebody, uh, ends up stuck in there, there's no phone to pick up, to call. We are mandated to replace that. Otis, uh, is sort of like an exclusive contractor for our elevator, uh, is saying that it's gonna cost. Six thousand two hundred seventy-six dollars, seventy-seven cents. That's above the amount that either I or the department head can approve. Uh, so, uh, I'll put that on the agenda next week to go ahead and, uh, approve the or, uh, repair order. And I will recommend that we use, uh, monies that are in our contingency line, which currently has nineteen thousand dollars in it. Uh, so it doesn't impact the budget in any way. We'll just really use that, which is why it's there.
Thanks. Time frame, we're gonna do this as soon as possible?
Yes, so as soon as you approve it, Chris will contact Otis and get it scheduled. Now, there are other things that, um, we will be faced with with that elevator. We have asked them to, um, put together for us, uh, list, an itemized list of what we need to do. So we can program that in over the next couple of years and be compliant.
Okay. Waiver of conflict and consent to representation?
We have, um, uh, proposal right now in front of our attorneys for our inmate housing agreement with Gladwin County. Uh, our firm has, uh, between last year and this year, has picked up Gladwin County as a client. And so the county, our county Ogama, because we've asked for review of that contract, yeah, they are asking for a waiver of conflict of interest. Uh, with Gladwin County, they are in effect working for both counties. Now, they did review this contract last year. I will be surprised if there are any, anything alarming, uh, that's in there. The only real changes are the, the payment arrangements that we've talked about. Uh, but they do need that in order to work for both counties. And they do ask that, uh, both county boards approve this. And so we've got the draft in front of you.
Comments, commissioners?
No, I read it. It, it, it spells out that they don't feel that there's a conflict. A conflict there, um. I think down toward the bottom there that, uh, they don't reasonably believe the representation. The manner adversely affects Gladwin. So. Yeah, I don't have a problem. Let's do that. I might, I might keep them and.
So I guess my question would be is if we run into a conflict, which hopefully we don't, and I doubt that we will. But if we do, then what legal representation do we utilize?
We'll have a conversation if that happens and decide if it's something we don't believe the, uh, uh, firm can, uh. Objectively defend us, then we will find somebody else.
Well, I'm sure they're not gonna be able to if, if they also defend Gladwin.
Yeah, that would be a tough one for them even to.
That's what they're saying here in the letter, but they're not going to.
Gladwin wanna sue us for some, for something. And yeah, they, they have a hard time. But we can get, we can get legal representation on a, on a separate, just for one case. I mean.
Well, if we were being sued, we would turn it over to our insurance carrier who would assign.
Right, there you go.
Uh, so we wouldn't have that problem. But what we're seeing with this particular waiver is that, uh, for putting together the structure of the contract. We only ask our attorneys for approval as to form. So does it have everything in there it needs? Does it have, uh, a termination section in there? Is there an indemnification language in there that's consistent with the law? Uh, as far as what the numbers were that we agreed to, they're not offering an opinion on that.
Yeah.
Paying too much or paying too low, they're not gonna do that. But if it did come down to, uh, the, you know, a challenge. Uh, likely it's gonna come down to pay, or did we pick up an inmate on time or whatever? Um, you know, that's probably something gets turned over to our insurance carrier.
Anything, Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, I don't, perfect world. I wish this didn't exist. We shouldn't have to deal with it, but it's here and. Just move forward and hope the best.
Commissioner Mayhew? Same legal team representing both, both places?
Yeah.
I, I see the point. Typically, if it's an issue, it's an inmate related and that does go to our insurance carrier. I mean, we haven't had any issues with Gladwin up to this point, correct? At least not that the sheriff's office has brought to us.
Quite candidly, I think they've been, uh, very tolerant of us in understanding that this is new to everybody. Uh, I, I couldn't have expected anything better than what we've seen.
Would have thought if there's gonna be issues, it would have been within this first year.
Right.
Yeah. Matter of fact, they offered us another contract.
We accepted it.
Yes, and they, they like it. Yeah, so.
Okay. Uh, zoning board of appeals appointment. Brian, you're up.
Hey, Ryan.
Just real quick, Clay. As you may know already, that one of our, um, the Joe Peterson, who lived on the zoning board of appeals. For thirty-plus years and was chairman of that board for almost that long as well too, is, um, has resigned from the board. Is, um, looking, I believe, to move out of state. um, has resigned from the board, is, um, looking, I believe, to move out of state. And we've had, um, this position posted, I believe I put two ads in the paper in consecutive weeks. And so far, this is the only application that I've received for appointment in that timeframe. This individual did get an opportunity to speak with him the other day for a little while and, uh, he's actually referred to us from Joe, um. I trust Joe's opinion and I believe this individual make a would make a good member for the zoning board of appeals. Uh, recently retired, um, starting to get involved a little bit of his township, going to his township meetings, so I believe you'd be a good candidate for him. I don't necessarily in this particular position look for people that have experience, because I don't want them coming in with preconceived notions, so. So I've got a little bit of training material that I can get him on and, um, our next meeting is scheduled for September third, so hopefully we can get him appointed and put him right to work here on September third.
Comments, questions?
We'll see you, bro.
Referring back Joe especially during night.
Is there a, uh, deadline, do they, do you, do you have to go re- renewal with this, or is this just until they decide to withdraw off the board?
Um, there are renewals, so probably here in another month or so, I will have some members of both planning commission and zoning board of appeals that will be up for reappointment, so uh, these are three-year positions.
Three years, that sounds like a good one, okay.
I believe I've like a couple on each one that will be up for renewal this year, so.
You have a new chairman?
Um, currently right now, Dick Ahinger is the vice chairperson, so, um, we will probably, I'm gonna have to review the bylaws and see how that works. I don't know if we reappoint or if he moves up or if we revote on it, so. But it's spelled out in the bylaws.
I, I know this gentleman, he'll be, he'll be a good candidate.
Yeah, very nice guy.
Yes.
Very mild-mannered, um, I think he'll be a great addition for us.
Fantastic, thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Old jail salvage and demolition.
So, do we want to get into this?
It's just real quick.
Thanks, real quick.
Go ahead and take it.
Quickly.
Yeah. Yeah, I just said it's, it's time that we start to get a little more serious with, you know, our, prepare and ready to, to, we do look at the, uh, demolish the jail, um. Then on the other side of that is, uh, me and Tim have spoke with, uh, prosecutor Ladonna a few times and we have brought that to you guys about a possible new memorial for fallen police officers and so we actually met with her again today just to kind of keep the ball rolling and, um, we're gonna talk about that, um, at another meeting here real soon, but Ladonna brought up the idea, well, let's try to get, um, the possibility of some companies coming in, she brought up one in Ohio. They'll come in, you know, from toilets to sinks, uh, there may be some other items in there that they want, and they, you know, offer a price for them. It's a value, you know, we obviously, if we can get some, some money for some of these items, it'd be dumb of us not to. Um, Tim brought a point today that we have a newer air handler on top of the roof, so we could talk like to waste some of these local contractors, see if anyone would have interest, and that can be part of an RFP, the generator, um, it doesn't sound like it has an input for here, but that does have a value. We just need to get this stuff, I think, moving forward. Uh, we just wanted to bring it to you guys and see what your guys' thoughts were.
What are the, what's, uh, we just heard from the building, um, Inspector, tonight, what's the thought, what's the storage over there, what, what, what's it look like?
Well, there's nothing we have spoken today too, we, we do need to figure that, that out as well, so. And meanwhile, I mean, we do have a lot of room over at the, at the jail. Um, but that is something that has to be figured out as well, so.
True.
But we do have a ton of room at the jail.
Yeah, I just hate to transfer, it'd be nice, like, we talked about, you know, putting stuff, scanning stuff in, technology-based, so we can get away from.
Yeah.
Answering storage and that kind of thing, yeah.
So the majority of the stuff is mine, right? They're probably ninety eight percent is mine, um.
At the, at the old jail storage you're talking?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a lot of stuff, but with the retention schedules, there's some stuff in the old files that we can get rid of, we have to save some, but, um, I did reach out to some of the other local clerks today, actually, when I saw this on the agenda, um, to see what their scanning, any programs that they use or systems, whatever, just to, because it's coming, I mean, we know that something is gonna happen, whether it be in a year or two, whatever, we know something's coming, something has to be done. As of right now, there's a lot of space that's needed for all of the storage, so I am in the works of trying to figure something more convenient.
It's conversation, I think it's an excellent idea moving forward, I mean. Hey, thanks. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Mayhem, any comments? Commissioner Wiltzy?
I'm good right now.
Commissioner Scott?
I think we've had a very productive meeting tonight, very productive and, uh, I think the discussion's been very good and a lot of opinions expressed. I'm glad to be part of it.
I agree.
And I missed you last week too.
Um, next week our meeting is, which we always typically, uh, change, next week our meeting is the week of the fair, the week of the livestock auction.
Is that on Thursday night?
Mm-hmm.
You still got money left over from the other one?
Not a lot, but I always show support. I'm a huge advocate of four H, I'm a huge advocate of the livestock of the kids, I, I, I do try to attend. Um, I attended so far all of them, the Ogumah's next week, and I'm talking about the surrounding, I ask over and at. I'm not, I'm a, I was forty three.
You want to do?
That's what I'm asking, we're in conversation, I don't think we, I don't think we have time to postpone, but in the past, I think we have changed it to maybe Tuesday. I, I'm asking you guys, do you guys want to continue? I will not be present and that's okay, I just am letting you know.
Well, if we were not to have the meeting, I think there's a couple of things then we need to vote on tonight.
That's not what I'm asking.
Okay, well.
I think it's important to have a meeting.
I think we did, we didn't have a meeting last week, I think we need to have a meeting.
I think we have a meeting and I'm just letting you know, in the past, we have abstained from Thursday to show our support and I know there's other local, uh, that have supported the four H, uh, livestock auction, um, elected officials, department heads.
I could do Tuesday.
Tom.
I could, I can do Tuesday next week. I look. But Wednesday and Thursday I can't.
I could even do Thursday during the day, I'm off, the, the show's in the morning, but I'm off till, you know, till the sale, so I'm just throwing it out there, I, I feel pretty strongly about this, so. Mr. Mayhem?
I can be here Tuesday.
Tuesday? Tuesday evening?
Charlie's checking.
Tuesday's twelve.
I think I have a nine one one meeting.
Well, we've got MTA meeting on Tuesday. In Mills Township. Oh, no, that's, that's, that's the nineteenth, so I'm sorry, twelfth. I have my Mills Township meeting Tuesday.
General cons, general consensus is whatever.
Seven o'clock. Can we do Thursday morning, says six?
Well, six.
We do the, well, next Thursday morning. We don't have any, anything.
No, we only have the, the upgrade committee at four thirty.
Yeah, well, Sparks and Rec is Thursday morning.
How about we do noon? Thursday, the beef show in the morning, that's part of the fair.
Yep.
I could miss that for the auction, but I could do Thursday at noon, I, I don't, how do you guys feel about that?
At noon?
Roger, just.
Thursday, twelve o'clock, can you do that?
I don't know.
We need a general consensus.
I can do it, uh, Mark's on the call.
Commissioner Serbrook.
Tom, can you open Mark up just to, to, we get, at least find out if he's available?
He didn't text me.
Hey, let me in, yes, I am.
You're available Thursday at twelve?
I'm available, yep, I got a three o'clock that afternoon, but other than that, I'm available.
You feel okay about that?
I do.
Hey, I'm sorry to inconvenience anybody, but this is part of our community.
Well, you say, why don't we, we have three more years after this, why don't we just put it in the books for?
Denise typically always comes and reminds us and. What?
Just, I could remind you.
Huh?
I said I could have reminded.
Well, I.
We'll see you at noon.
Good with that, Tim?
Got it.
Hey. You guys need to, you'll be good with that? I want to make sure everybody's, you, yes, Thursday gonna be here, okay? Okay. Any other comments? I appreciate that, guys, I just.
Yeah.
Any other comments? No? Commissioner Scott, you already said yours. Public comment? Public comment in the room?
I just want to say it's the, the fair has the option, it's four H kids participating in the auction, that just belongs to the fair, I don't want anyone to misunderstand.
It does, no, yes. It didn't in the past, but recently it has.
Yep, absolutely, for the last five years or so, it's been, the spares auction and junior market livestock does that and they do a great job, so. We are definitely supporting it, part of it, but it's not our thing.
Anybody on the phone, any comments?
Jeff?
Jeff?
You hear me?
Yep, go ahead, Jeff.
Okay, just, 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 uh, Mr. Wiltzy, just don't forget to include the veterans on the veterans memorial.
Oh, absolutely, in our talks today, you guys are right there on the forefront, it'll be included in everything.
Awesome, I talked to Ladonna this week, so, uh, I have an idea what's going on, but I, I have a couple of, uh, veterans that would like to be involved in the design process.
Absolutely, yep, we'll be in touch, okay, once we start moving forward with the plan.
Thank you.
Thank you. He's not bringing it out.
Any other public comment? We have closed session for consult, anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we go in a closed session for, uh, thank you, I don't have, uh.
MCL, do you need it here?
MCL one five point two six eight. Eighteen. I just, get a little mark if they aren't.
Yeah, the motion will have to include the reason, which is written on there.
Oh, the reason is, uh, uh, consult with legal counsel, um, regarding Fox versus Ogumah County.
Someone want to support that?
I'm.
Roll call vote.
I'm Mayhem.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Hey, I'm gonna take a quick, will, will there be any, any business after? Can we announce that to the public?
No business.
And you're keeping Karen in here too.
Okay, I'll be, I'll be two minutes.
So next Thursday at noon. Okay. I've got a need to be a noon meeting.
Yeah, that wise.
Maybe I should be.
We have a motion to come out of course. Uh, support from Commissioner Wiltzy, all in favor, or no, roll call. You need this back?
Charles Wiltzy.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David, yes.
Let's, he's got it, right?
Are we back?
Don't, um.
Although they were.
Anyway. Pardon?
Even though they were just.
Yeah, I mean, you don't want to share them with anybody, then toss them at all.
Do it. Yes, I don't, I don't really.
Fine.
Thank you. Cycle. You can reuse the limbo.
Are we back on?
Yeah.
How about we back on?
Tom, did you turn us on?
Yep, you're on.
All right.
I'll make a motion to, oh, I'll make a motion to come back in the open session. Or.
Motion for support to come back into open session, roll call vote. Frank Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David, yes.
Uh, Roger Mayhem.
What?
Charles Wiltzy.
Yes.
Your turn.
Motion to adjourn, support. All favor?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Who said they're coming back in?
I did.
Okay.